Okay, it is six o'clock. We will go ahead and call this official budget workshop to order. If you guys would please rise and join me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by one nation, under God, in indivizl, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let me make sure I have the audio. Yep, okay. Get our people in the waiting room here, so. Hello, Chief Lamar, can you hear us all right? And Miriam, can you hear us all right?
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
Can you guys hear us?
Yes, yes, I can hear you.
I don't need the volume on because it's. Can you hear us now? Usually don't use that volume because it feeds through all.
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
Chief Lamar, can you hear us? Can you hear us now?
Yes, we can hear you.
There you go, okay.
Can you hear us now?
Yes, and I don't know why it was doing that because the TVs are where they're supposed to be, and this was where it was supposed to be. But anyway, we just did the pledge allegiance so far, so clerk treasurer price, could you please do roll?
Enter Gary.
Present.
Here. Cody Nelson. Mary Aids.
Here.
Well, more.
Here.
Okay, so tonight's meeting is solely for the purpose of the twenty twenty-five fiscal year budget. Guys have had several things printed in front of you, just as we go through the night that we need to reference. Contracts or any other documents, these are things I've said to you previously for the things that's been presented to us that we may or may not wish to proceed with in twenty twenty-five. We're gonna start by, do you want to do, do you guys want to do the folks that are here, that way we can get them out of the way and.
Yes.
Yes, okay, so. I don't care who goes first, and if Aaron or the police department or JT, I'll let you guys, just let us know, we'll pick through our sheets that we have here and find you on our. Okay, so.
Aaron, you want to go first?
Chief Lamar submitted your guys, so they all have it in front of them and in on paper, so. And your guys is so Aaron's is, his is separated, you guys should have it, it'll say MBH, it'll, I think it's three or four pages, so you should have it in front of you. Just, you'll have to look at each piece of paper and see the line items to distinguish what the part, probably this. Aaron, just one of those green ones right there, right there. Yep, Aaron just pop that one right there. And Aaron has a copy as well, so. Guess through my six thousand things of paperwork here. All right, Aaron, do you want to? If anything you want to speak on that stands out from what you have submitted, or anything you want to cancel the. Sure.
Sounds good.
So, first of all. Case there of the change in contract amount, so previously that number is never reflected with the true. So just last year we got one four, one seven fifty, and I just bumped that up to one eighty four seven six, which is reflective of the current rate of public debt out.
It's on page one, which is actually the second page.
Say it'll say solid waste on the side.
Next one I've got is LRS, that just stayed the same. I took a look at the first six months revenue, projected that out for a year, and if those numbers fall true, but we're still about eighty four hundred dollars below. LRS, case of patching. Absolutely, always I believe, if there's an issue like a change, something like that, or we kind of weren't.
Which one does, like, your solid and stuff like that come out of?
It just, so you guys know your master spreadsheet that you was given, the LRS is a separate thing too, but he gave, Aaron took the time to do a separate one for you guys for each of his lines, so you'll have a separate one too, so thank you for doing that.
Local running street.
Sorry, Aaron, go ahead.
No questions on LRS, next one I have is MBH. Going down through there, other side is the same. Patching salt last year, we had sixteen thousand, I bumped that down to twelve, and barns. Pretty cool, and I've got a couple eighty four hundred dollars up my budget this year, so I'll probably place my orders, I won't, I would use that up for the bad burn in barn, so we'll be able to pull stock, so barring a major testing this year, for the last few years, we kind of used a lot of salt.
Indiana, we'll just never know when we need it.
This line supplies I left saying, that takes care of some parts, sweeper, sweet parts, burn, precious things of that nature. I left the one fifty in the MBH to certain. That takes care of all my micros, still have like this year, my favorite, like Austin contractor. Certainly that one takes me some thought, so it's typically all that, that gets very loud, the micros, that's always, it's great, so I like that same. The next one there, you'll see a drastic decrease, so that was improvements, last year money was put in there for the, we made this facility, that's coming to fruition, just about done. So I addressed, cut that, I did leave some of that in there, we've got some maintenance to do in some existing barns, barn, you know, things of that nature, so I did leave some.
So you're for MBH improvements other than building, is that twenty thousand proposed for twenty twenty-five?
That twenty thousand is proposed for twenty twenty.
Okay, I was just, I was looking at, okay, just making sure.
The other one I've got, the other column, I got twenty four, that was.
Yeah, I like how you did your spreadsheet, that's, thank you for that. Now, I, I kind of overloaded you guys with, with paper, but I wanted you to be able to choose what format you wanted to, to use when you're checking off and putting the consensus amount, so you, you have more than more than enough to pick which one you want, so. No, we're, we're using, we're using the one that that one's the one we're using, plus we have a, yeah, that's the main one we're going to go off, plus we have a, a appropriation report that we're just going to go down as well, so.
Everything went down, that's.
Yeah.
Well, then a big factor on the payment for the building.
That's in general, okay.
Yeah.
All right, now in general. Five percent of the salaries, what my work sample is on that, and they bring any work, please, to the class, to the last several years, so. That's what I put into salaries. Clothing, that stayed the same, I'm sort of, I need to hire somebody, but I've got enough clothing now, I'm giving it for six of those. I brush the motor, I have left the same. Computer control, I decreased over the last several years, there wasn't, hasn't been any need for it. So I did decrease that a little bit. I then increased office supplies a little bit, new facility and sharing. Pop yours and things like that, interest, I bumped that up a little bit. Previous line stayed the same. Tree replacement stayed the same. Park cemetery, maybe the same. If anybody got questions on where they're listening, or if they're being useful.
You know, it's not going to see no spreader.
I know, I didn't have one for his.
I don't see.
I have a.
I just didn't know how that worked.
I have MBH, I don't.
Hey, Aaron, we don't have the updated one for your general.
Yeah, so the, the, you, the, this three that you.
The bigger.
Page ten.
Yeah, the green, yeah, you know, page. Page ten, bigger.
Never mind, sorry.
Hold on.
Just did five, right, I think five.
We already did that on V H.
Oh, the, of the nineteen.
It's the big one here, so it's been, it's been built by civil city, it's page ten. It's got. I don't have ten pages.
There it is.
On the bottom, got it, sorry.
Anybody have any questions for what superintendent lines has proposed for MBH, LRS? Solid waste or the general that he just presented?
Dark solid waste contract from year to year, or is it like two year or?
It's a, it was a continuous, well, we talked about the trash cans.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a continuous one, so unless we revisit it, then it stays the same and just rolls over. So that was the one eighty, nothing, whatever he said it was, eighty, one hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and seventy-six, I think it was.
Originally, I think it's four year, three year contract, and then.
If we. Yeah.
That's what I came across.
One eighty-two, nine seventy-six.
So. Seven, one extra thousand, ours, that's twice.
Yeah. Which I, we haven't gotten anything saying it's going to go up, so.
We know I had a couple of people that had stopped in the office, had asked about that, and I said, you know, you'll have to give a little. And because it's abusive. Yeah, I don't think we found anybody to prepare for it yet, have we?
No.
No.
I think the last one was a.
I know when we quoted those out, there was not even a close. Yeah. They're buying up about everybody, so.
Just leaving it as is.
I knew.
We haven't gotten anything on price changes, but that doesn't mean it won't January first, much, again, it's a contract, so. Any questions for Aaron? Okay.
Should I back up and go through that, the general one?
I was looking for the sheet, but I just went through and personally scanned through, I don't see anything that stands out to me.
Where left all this? Printing and advertising, that stayed the same. Utilities, I left the same. Really want to do with that, with that in charge, our history of.
It's gonna go.
So I, I've been tipsy of doing that, I think I had. That includes all the parks. So, what about bumping it up? By number. Transformation funds that made a year, we had this, we're not getting transferred to additional appropriations.
Have you got your first utility bills yet?
First duty bill, second duty bill. My portion of society, three and five.
And it's going to fluctuate season to season as well, so winter time, you're going to be using a lot more gas than your, well, you actually.
If you believe the weather, it's supposed to be a cold, chilly winter, so maybe.
So I, I didn't know what to do with that, so I left it, yeah, I wasn't, I think I was probably go ahead and just
for preparation on it, since I don't want to have to go back and do an appropriation or transfer later for next year, just save this next year, so, and if he's got money left over, then we know better for the.
Was that for utility services?
Yeah, yeah, I'm looking at the year, the, we spent a year to date, how the eighteen is ten, three ninety-four, seventy-six.
But that was at the.
Yeah, so he's probably gonna have.
That does of today's report.
Today's report.
Right.
That's what has been expended out of the eighteen. So you're talking another four months in your facility, with a lot more.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because of square footage and.
Well, I mean, he cut quite a bit out of MBH and, yeah, LRS, I think helping it wouldn't be a problem, because he cut a hundred and thirty-four thousand.
Twenty, twenty to at least twenty-five.
Yeah.
For that purpose, just because of the being a facility and having.
And it's something again, you know, we don't have to, obviously, if it's there at the end of the year, we can go back in or.
Good year to get a benchmark and see what it's going to cost at the, any Doyle twenty-five thousand? In census?
Yeah.
In the winter time, you're using a lot more electricity, plus you're going to get the, the gas aspect, so, okay. Anything else, Aaron?
Going on down through there, I left landscaping, hard and soft, the same, that takes care of the uptown, that's like repairs, like flowers, coconut baskets, I think, very expensive. That line on taste, that, here at the uptown, makes some parts. Park and recreation program, I look the same, and we have to board this, uh, get along pretty good, then move the feet, there's some moves and parks and that nature, so I'm not that same. They didn't, first entire range, so I, we look at the same. Parking area, I've got the same, um, bringing on what we do for C C and G. We pass this round, obviously. Council wishes going to first submit by the first round. We talked about. First playground, it stays sane. Street repairs stayed the same, it was a seminar stayed the same. Incorporated, the forty thousand dollar principal loan, both, so we have that covered in the building. Our whole reference remained the same. How it decreased street parties, we put the third just in there, that number was positive, we had a lot of small things, so I want that back down. Park and skate was staying the same as the resurfacing. Storm summers, sidewalks, it's been the same. Again, going C C and G, you see, I'm sitting there like I got maintenance and C C and G, typical what they have been doing in the past, it will be expensive, you know, we can put that money in the budget, and so that money is used for overage. I had an overage on C C and G, I just paid twenty-four thousand dollars out of my budget, every single overage of, of projects. As long as we don't have any busts in a C C and G job, those funds go to hydro shield and crash down, but we are saying that's, we need C C and G and help for bringing. So, yeah, we don't talk like that, so we continue, so. Best with that research, we might not, it's same way with, you know. Well. Prepare the site. That stuff is used for C C and G mass, or if you have an area that we have to do emergency repairs on tomorrow, otherwise, that money goes back to general team there. Worked out well, because there are years that we have overages on C C and G, open up the ground and. So I left those, those numbers the same. That's general fun. Other than C C and G. Whether or not council wishes to go in next year. And do C C and G. And if so, we're, we're going. I asked, sign down here, obviously, it is fine.
I think Danny has the question.
Got, off streets, that have been waiting out, otherwise, we'll pull this out on the thing. Since it's, it's actually drive through town, take a look at some of the streets, it's. It's, it's mighty most.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I just, and you, you may have discussed about it, but I just thought about it, so with the new highway or where we go from the Dairy Queen on out, is there anything in here for this, or do we have to cover anything next year for that?
That's a good question, but with the bridge getting ready to close, it's in twenty twenty-five, was, was scheduled to start letting End dot's gonna do some repairs to it, and Miriam, are you, can you hear us? We, we had some discussions about this already, and then we discussed it last night at the R D C meeting. We get, we're supposed to get one payment, the county will get eighty thousand dollars, and then we get thirty, thirty-one thousand of that, that has not happened yet. Um, so at some point. Yes.
It's kind of a toss-up, because I have, we all have kind of a difference of opinion on, on this, so, waiting on legal to come up with who's in charge of it right now, because it was under, my impression when we did the agreement with the county, that once the state redid the road and the bridge and stuff like that, and B three, we're looking at the city for maintenance, however, there's some.
They're not on the same thing.
Right.
Miriam, do you have anything to add on that?
I, I think you are correct, that you should have gotten that eighty thousand dollars before now, and I'm not sure why, why that hasn't been released, I don't know whether it's locked up at the city, or I'm sorry, the state or at the county level.
It's, it's in the process, unfortunately, the, it was not submitted by I don't know who was, the, the process was supposed to go through, but it was after the fiscal year date, so it goes into the state of Indiana's next fiscal disbursement, so it'll be, I, I've been in contact with Enda, and they're going to try to expedite it, but that's something that's very rare for them to just to cut a separate check from a fiscal budget, so. I haven't got an update on when we'll get those funds, but yes, by the time we get them, we'll probably get two, because it'll be into the next year, it won't be another thirty-one thousand, because then there's a amount we get each year, so.
So we could financially take care of it till that happens.
Aaron?
Yeah, it. Held back on the salt, because I've got pretty full salt in that, the problem with. I'm on state bid. So with state bid, you have to place in, once I order this place, I have to order eight percent. Whether I got one, it's just, he didn't, I got to order, so I've got to stick it in the farm, I've got to have some, so that's why I backed some of that, but I still have money in there, I still have a hundred and twenty-five reserves on top of what I've already got in the farm. So you hate to place the order, it's a, it's crashing.
It's, they, they lock you in to where, whatever that price is, you're not getting out of it.
And, and the reason I ended up on state bid was because several years ago, there was a salt shortage, believe it or not, and I called my local supplier to get salt, and they told me no. And if it wasn't, all codes of the county, they gave some, because they had no.
And, and the county has been very receptive to helping us out with some things, and Aaron's working with them on, they're helping us, we're helping them, so that, that's, that's huge.
So, I feel that I have enough salt and barn for the maintain, that's, that really does take a lot of salt.
Yeah.
The other thing that is, we've got rubber hedges, I do have one pile out there, they'll have to leave the metal edge off, I have to, so it's harder for us to keep that nice and low off, remember rubbery because of all the vanvols and water valves and everything. So it's a little harder for us, it takes a lot more salt, you go down, so you want young salt, I don't want, they're giant, five, it's a little harder. We did it last year.
So, does that help your question, Doyle?
Yeah, I just want to make her recover, that's a lot of territory.
Yeah, and Aaron's done a great job of working with Donnie Chocolate, and Johnny's been very receptive to helping us, and we're helping them, or we can help them, and they're helping us, so that, I don't see that discontinuing, and they, they're, they're kind of in the same boat, right, so the, the teamwork of knocking out what needs knocked out's been so far, so good, right, I mean, yeah, so that's.
Yeah.
It's good, that's what I should do.
So where is your, where is your pickleball going now, I saw that you had there a pickleball game.
We still build the table.
Yeah.
There's all that.
Uh, parking structures, they're the same too, so.
Is that, will that be at Riley Park?
It'd be at Riley.
Yes.
Are you doing it open tennis courts, or the old tennis court?
Be over the old tennis courts, so, park board, expressed desire to solicit votes in crisis oil. I've got money in there in this year, so JT is in contact with contractors, I'm in contact with contractors, unfortunately, getting all that information together in time. So our goal is to hopefully get that number, if I don't use the funds for any emergency. So our goal is to hopefully get that number. If I don't use the funds for any emergency. Possibly encumber. And then put money in there for next year as well. He's been swiss or brains. But I don't know. So I don't even know if that.
It'd be a little different if it didn't have to be ripped out completely, which, but it does.
So. I left the other, the encumbered or. To get. Engineer, the numbers, and it's a lot more, we some move parade day or. We didn't move my name on the break. From outside.
You, you should have those numbers by the time we have our next workshop, right? To where we can decide whether we need to encumber or not.
Carl, I've already talked to that person about the likes. So.
Is there ever any conversation about doing anything about, um, any updates at City Park?
In regards to.
Just some of the equipment, like.
It's, it's, I think I was brought up on one of our meetings.
Yeah, I feel like it's cut around it. I mean, the, the addition of those. Couple like more plastic ones was nice, but then there's still like a few that are, or even adding a couple of things. Yeah.
And then the big playground stands fires.
Yeah.
That got installed and I was about here, so I can.
Yeah.
Think I replaced the roof a couple of years ago, because the old one was just so dated, it was being painted, so I tried to. So, it's time.
I, and also, this is side note, but I noticed someone had a big party over there in the, and you, that used to happen a lot, and I don't really see that very often. Does that get rented out the same? This is kind of side note, not budget, but does it get rented out the same way it does at like Riley Park? You know how like Riley Park, if you wanna, is it supposed to be? Yeah.
Yeah, Riley Park gets rented out about every weekend.
Yeah. Yeah. Awesome.
Are they actually showing up?
Yesterday, there was a huge.
I learned the hard way for the city or Riley Park on how busy it was.
Yeah, last weekend, there were so many people there, something going on.
Okay, so anything else for Aaron?
You, you may have the grass mess of the mess. You, you use conventional salt or you switch to brine?
We don't, I'm right. Have you checked to see if there's any?
We don't have a brine truck.
We don't have brine truck, we don't have facility, we don't.
Yeah, it's a.
We used to run heat juice, uh, years ago. That can pretty expensive. So. For the most part, the, uh, the way I've been treating the last several years worked. Until. You have a hard freeze.
Twenty below.
So you go and you have wet snow, you, you can't get it off, you'll see my guy lots of time roaming around, looks like he's not doing anything. He's gonna give instructions, get as much of the stuff and load it up as possible.
There's not that much advantage either.
No, if you don't, I mean, the state has it.
And they said you're doing twenty five.
Yeah, the state uses it and they just take up a lot down.
It's a whole system. You gotta have a system to get the salt. Perfectly, it's a perfect equation and it's quite a setup, so it would be hundreds of thousands of dollars just to get that part of it.
So I just.
Yeah.
For the most part, we're able to keep up with it. The only problem is when you have that snow and then to get down to eight degrees, five degrees, and doesn't matter what you do.
Well, I strange my app because you talk about the. Salt freeze is not. Pre-treated and I didn't know.
We used to see you. The expense outweighed nothing.
All right, anything else, Aaron? Other than the change that we made for the, um, we upped the. Utilities. Is there any? Changes to that? The sheets that you have, if not, we can change the, the consensus to be to change the twen- that to twenty five thousand for utilities. If you guys are good with all the other numbers. Or if you want to discuss any numbers, so. It's util, it's all utilities, yes.
The only other number I could think of is the five percent buildup raises. I think we, that would be a greater discussion overall.
Yes.
And that was just a number.
Sure, right, it's, it's a starting place.
Yep.
But I think it's more efficient if we just have like a whole conversation about everything all at once.
Every, every department and everyone, yeah. Okay, thank you, Aaron.
You got any questions for us?
No, thank you. Alright, it's a nice building.
You guys have a sheet now for the police department that has, it'll say P D on it. It'll have other departments on it, but that's. It also has the police department on it, that you will be focusing on. No, it'll say P D with a black sharpie.
Well, it does say that.
Oh, yep, that one. It apparently didn't bleed through. Uh, who? On behalf of, uh, Chief Lamar, are you speaking or is, uh, your two gentlemen here?
I, I would be happy to, or if it would translate better with the sergeants that have also been briefed on. The budget and I'd be happy to chime in, what, whatever works best.
Time purposes, can you just tell us what the, what lines or, or what items you are requesting? Change in and anything that you want the council to hear.
Uh, so to start with the, uh, we're looking at. Uh, I'm requesting a five percent raise across the board for our personnel. Uh, part of that is looking at other agencies. If you look at Indiana State Police, their. Uh, trainees come in at sixty six thousand, probationary seventy thousand. Year two seventy three thousand, year fifteen a hundred and twelve thousand. It, when you look at other departments with the nineteen seventy seven fund. Lafayette P D first class officer is seventy five thousand, six hundred and thirty one dollars, so. One of our officers could leave today and go to Lafayette P D and make seventy five six, so. Um, that's why I'm looking at the five percent increase. As far as, uh, retention of the officers that we have is we're at current staff right now. And I would be happy to take any questions on the five percent before moving on to the next.
I have a question. Was it the, uh, considered a benefit that don't they take the cars home now? They've had a benefit also.
Can you hear that, Nate?
No, no, sir, with, with Zoom, I'm only able to hear a couple of you. What, what was the question?
So would it be considered a benefit that now they take the cars home?
It, it is considered, uh, somewhat of a benefit, but we're still not a full benefit. Some of the departments I listed off, such as Indiana State Police. Uh, they have off duty use, so the Delphi Police Department doesn't have off duty use. We actually had troopers that came to the, to Bacon Fest and brought family members, um, wives, father in laws with them. Our officers aren't able to do that. They're o- only able to drive to work and back, so. Even though we have take home cars with, uh, use to work and back, which we're greatly appreciative of. Uh, these other departments that are in the six figures to pay officers. Actually have take home cars with off duty use, um, which we don't have yet.
That answer your question, Doyle?
Yeah, I was just curious if that's factor in, all that compared to. We compare apples to apples, small towns to small towns of same population.
Sure.
Which is an officer who would recruit the best of the best. I don't want to retain them too.
Yeah, yes.
And I, I heard some apples, apples, it's, it's one thing, small town, the small town, but, uh, one of our officers, I'd. I hate to disclose this to our two sergeants in the room, but they could leave and go make over a hundred thousand dollars in state police and have. Uh, off duty use of their take home cars, so while state police may be on a different level, um, they're recruiting hard, trying to take our. Uh, our qualified personnel away from us, so that's part of the reason of the five percent increase. Trying to retain the officers that we have, the, the cost that it takes to, uh, recruit. Train and retain officers is, is much higher.
I, I just bribed them both with pizza, so they're not going anywhere.
Well, good.
You guys have any, I'm sorry, go ahead, chief.
Oh, I didn't have anything, I'm sorry, Mayor.
And do you guys see anything on what Chief Lamar submitted that you have any questions? Or any certain items? And then, yeah, did you guys find the sheet that said P D on it? Okay, perfect.
I understand the retention thing, because years ago, at least one of Purdue was taking. We'd get somebody trained to spend the money to train them and they just go somewhere else. I don't want that.
That happens every day.
It's just, it was just crazy. I couldn't believe at that time they would at least take care of keeping them here.
It's a competitive, you know, the, it's a career that not a lot of people are doing anymore, so. When, when you get dedicated officers, you're. Want to keep them, so.
Tonight, you did say five percent across the board for. The guys, right?
Yes, sir.
Sergeants, you and, uh, first class patrol.
That's correct.
We don't have any probationary, do we? Well, technically, we still have one, but.
Status, yes.
Status. First class pay.
I know we, once he's released from that, yeah, he'll be first.
Which that should be before the twenty twenty five.
Yeah, hopefully so.
Well, so we should not have anyone on probationary status. Like pay status at twenty twenty five, right?
That's correct, as long as we can retain what we have.
Gotcha, okay.
Are we need any more offices?
We're at them. And I, I think that's the highest we've ever been.
Okay, I'll just check, because obviously you have to budget.
Yeah, I think, I think we're. Yeah, A plus the chief. That is, I'm pretty sure that is the highest we've ever had.
No, even work, even back, I think they used to be.
Back when, it was back when Keen Reddick was here.
It took us almost two years to get. The eight slots.
Yeah. It used to be seven, then we allocated one more, then we allocated one more.
Yes.
Okay, that's right. Um, can you explain the code enforcement stuff? What's going on with that, Nate?
So as far as code enforcement, uh, Sergeant Deckard has put a ton of work into, uh, code enforcement. We had. Uh, multiple applications, uh, he's, he's narrowed it down to, um, I believe. Someone that we may want to extend an offer to, but. Um, some of the increase that you see in the police department budget is the code enforcement position at thirty eight thousand dollars. Um, for those wages, we also have to, um, think about their cell phone. Uh, the tablet, the vehicle, so our old car three. Um, uh, uh, Delphi Police Car Three is two thousand nineteen Ford Explorer. Where we have stripped the vinyl decals off of that to make it car, uh, code enforcement car. And then also, um, you have to think about the upkeep and, and fuel burn for that vehicle. Um, so, taking on an additional position under the police department, we're. Trying to take into account all of the, uh, expenses that may come along with that, so between wages. Vehicle, equipment repairs, cell phone, tablet and whatnot.
Looking at this on the code enforcer expense on the general. It's not a good P D, but it's under the general, the forty five hundred dollars.
Yeah, there's.
Is he, is he wanting, are we wanting to use that for tablet? And the cell phone and things, or is. There's a line item for the tablet and. Yeah, I see the tablet and cell phone down here, but I'm just looking at the. General, yeah, on the general where it actually does say code enforcer expense.
Or software.
Services in charman.
What page is that? It's page one.
Yeah, so there, there's an actual cell phone line. Dedicated to, but that's, that's police itself.
Right.
We'll keep, she's talking about the actual general part.
Yeah, but general, under the code enforcement expense, it's, it's. Line item, the code is thirteen ninety three.
Yeah.
On page one, it says code for code enforcer expense. Forty five hundred dollars. Um, ten dollars was spent. You know, in twenty twenty four. So. And then it's, it's down to fifteen hundred, but I'm, I'm thinking.
I'm not sure what it would have been. Oh, they took it down to fifteen hundred.
Yeah. But I, I mean. If that's line item can cover. The cell phone and computer, whatever for the code enforcement. You know, I mean.
What was the?
Yes.
Your code enforcer expense line item. J, JT, in the past, was that line used for something specific? That you remember?
In the past, when the code enforcement role started in twenty one, it's. Uh, coming out. So I'm not serving on. I know it's coming out of edit, but the code enforcement. Office was paid, and that was done through a contract.
Yeah, it's listed in general under supplies budget. And it says code enforcer expense, so. Sure what that was for, because it was actually listed at forty five hundred dollars for. So, I just didn't know if that line item.
They used ten dollars.
Could then be used for. That particular. You know what I'm saying? If we, if we're gonna need a photo.
Are you hearing her question, Chief Lamar?
No, not necessarily, it's not picking up.
So the code enforcer expense line of fifteen hundred dollars, she's asking, could you, could you use that line for the code enforcement positions? Cell phones?
Has it been used before?
Or has it been used before for the cell phone, the tablet and the, the?
Do you know what the code enforcer expense line in the general? Under line item, uh, thirteen ninety three, what it was used for before?
I'm not privy to that line, that, that was not part of what I put together.
Okay, it just, it specifically says code enforcer expense. And it was at forty five hundred dollars and it's now like the proposed is fifteen. I just thought that if that was something that would help with that position. I mean, is this something that you would like us to check into?
Yeah, we would gladly take, uh, any unused lines other, under other budgets under ours, because we're. Um, trying to think of what we need for code enforcement. Um, so any, any code enforcement lines, we would be happy to take under our budget for consideration.
Okay, I just wasn't sure, maybe if you need like a clothing allowance or. You know, I mean, I know it says more expense, but. It's under the, it's under the supplies budget in the general, so. That's why I was asking.
Which my guess would be probably. Buying. Paper or.
Only ten dollars was used last year.
Right, so forty, but I'm trying to think of the original number of forty five hundred.
What it would be for.
Yeah.
We, we've increased our budget lines, uh, as far as code enforcement, when it comes to equipment and supplies, office supplies. Um, cell phone. When it comes to garage and motor for their vehicle, for fuel and vehicle maintenance, so whatever code enforcement lines are available, we, we would gladly take those.
I will check into that tomorrow and see what it has been used for in the past. And maybe that will help us a little bit.
Yeah, because the majority of the code enforcement. Prior to, uh, going full time was out of edit. So. Now taking it to full time, obviously, we're gonna have a different realm of. Equipment and stuff like that. Anything else on that?
There wasn't. It's not needed.
Make it zero, we don't necessarily get rid of the line item, just in case we have to.
Chief Lamar, do you have anything else to? Any particular items for discussion?
I would just, uh, voice again, the, the increases are. Uh, quite a bit of it is code enforcement. We're, uh, quoting in a body camera for code enforcement. I think it'll be necessary for them and the. Um, some of the clientele that they'll be dealing with. Um, so. To give you an idea, body camera per year is just under about six thousand dollars. Um, and that's, that contract is spread out over five, over five years, but you'll see like our, um. Um, I've left notes off to the side of our, um. Some of our lines about body camera budget and some of that taken into account. Getting a separate body camera for code enforcement themselves.
The code enforcement officer, would that still be considered public safety then, or maybe jump out of that room?
So Doyle asked, is the code enforcement position gonna fall under public safety?
Does it make body kit?
Yeah, but the problem is.
We have a vendor.
Well, not only that, but if you start writing infractions and stuff like that out of it, it's gonna be illegal, so it would have to be falling into your public safety.
Question. Yeah, I would say.
What you're saying, because you could buy the chief, chief one, but.
Next one now, that's really nice and trying to push it, but.
They're under contract with Axon right now, so.
Yeah, just let me know it was available. Versus paying.
Yeah.
About six thousand. About six thousand bucks.
Yeah, and the sad part is, is the, you know. Twenty years ago, this probably wouldn't be a neat, needed item for a code enforcement position, but in today's world. You know, it's. You're showing up to, you're, you're doing something that's. Can't get heated and people, uh, there's gonna be reactions that we, you know, it might get us in a scenario that it's he said, she said, or whatever, and. The, I know that the body cams that we've had so far have, have worked wonderful on some, on some certain. Things that they're intended for. So for that position itself. It's almost a necessity in anything you do in public service in today's world for. Any kind of enforcement, in my opinion, because I've not even in that role, and I'm almost worried by myself, one, just a person. Just, just to wear everywhere here. So then that, I don't mean that in a bad way, it's just it's society's a little bit. Uh, look, look different than it was twenty years ago. I don't think that's a secret, and it's, it's a good tool for anything that, that pops up, so.
Just like, yeah. Five thousand dollars less money.
Yeah. You guys have any questions for Chief Lamar, or Sergeant Deckard, or Sergeant Parkinson? Danny?
First by the personal use of vehicles versus to or from work, is that something we're dealing with now?
I think we'll cross that bridge after budget, once we get the budget approved into it, um. I think for being the liaison, talking to them, there's gonna be some fee. Uncorrect, right? There's something that was talked about, personal use, that way it helps cover the order, and it's some offsets and the fuel costs of.
They're willing to pay out their paycheck.
And that'll be an agreement policy for them to do that too, so. Because I mean, it is kind of a extra privilege to have. No, like everybody, it would be for take home for the PD, it'll be, uh, everyone will have the access to use it, everyone's gonna be smart, because it's gonna be part of the perk.
The way it's written is they'll have a portion taken out of their check to help offset it. It was like twenty five bucks.
Yeah, and that was just a rub.
Just a rub, yeah. So they're, they're willing to chip in for.
Yes, which is.
Yeah, so they're willing to have a portion of their check taken out for, uh, again, another incentive to. For, for that department to, you know, for retention and all that, so that's. Um, been, you know, let Spencer talk on that, he knows more about.
There's some, there's some other agencies that do that, where they, if you want personal use of your vehicle. You chip in, you know, they'll allocate so many miles, or you chip in twenty five, fifty bucks to help offset the cost of fuel. Offset the cost of oil changes, maintenance, and stuff like that on the vehicle. Instead of.
Does insurance too?
What's that?
Does that affect the insurance?
No, it's already, it's already everything. Yep, it's legit, just for the, the fee would be just to help cover the cost of oil changes and some fuel and breaks and, you know, general stuff. It's not much, but at the same time, it's something up again. More so for fuel, probably.
Prices.
Yeah.
Is that something they would leave the dollar?
Uh, some people would be over personal use of the car.
So the, the question was asked when we started the take home policy, Chief Lamar asked several of the candidates. Would you rather have a take home car or ten thousand dollars added to your salary? And I think it was ninety nine percent of them said take home car. If that tells you.
Yes.
Well, I mean, so that's, that tells you the, how important that is to, and it's, as an incentive for the department to. Will they leave? Yeah, that's things they look at, the, the new.
Personally, you know, with that idea, I wouldn't, I, I personally do not have any intentions of using it as a daily driver. And I don't know, maybe one person does or not, but it's more so have that peace of mind, knowing if my vehicle goes down, that I have a backup plan. Uh, just little things like that, but um, it's also something I'd be willing to pay for.
And it's a very money a cost, because this vehicle, they're not paying technically for fuel and insurance for as well. It's a, it's a perk, it's a big time perk, because we're not giving them a ten percent rate, we're giving them five percent, which is still like. Uh, I think it's like seven hundred and fifty bucks, a thousand bucks, something like that for officer, and I think that's what it was.
Frankly, police department started with the similar tiered system with. How much money out of paychecks, so if you lived in the city limits. They didn't take anything, but if you lived outside of city limits, it was twenty five dollars or fifty dollars.
Yeah, and then outside the county, outside of the county, it was like fifty bucks. I think it's twenty five if you lived in the county, then fifty outside the county.
Don't think they do that anymore, um, not sure, but I know that, I know for a fact that they did it, at one point, that's all their off duty policy became. Is that per week?
Per pay, so it'd be two, every two weeks for the city. But the pay itself would probably be based on if it's a.
I think it's gonna be a flat rate across the board.
Yeah, so if you do it per paper, you could, you do it per week?
No, it's fifty bucks, fifty bucks a pay, or fifty bucks a month, so twenty five bucks per paycheck.
Okay.
You'll get taken out, so fifty bucks a month.
Seeing a little low, but you're making it a perk also, so. I'll let you guys know what.
Yeah, and I mean, if you look at it this way, nine times, you know, nine times fifty, it's four hundred and fifty bucks a month. Going back and doing your fuel or maintenance.
How much is that per month?
Per month, four hundred and fifty bucks.
Oh, we've got.
Cause you got all nine.
Nine officers, nine officers, hundred fifty, it's four hundred and fifty, then that goes back ten times, you know, twelve months. You're talking damn near five thousand bucks after.
Yeah, but you're.
And that's, and that's something we can watch too, like, hey, don't overdo it, maybe do a mileage restriction type deal.
Find somebody who wins that, or you wanna be.
Yeah, that doesn't mean they could take it to King's Island, sorry.
Yeah, and the personal use we can limit to surrounding counties or something like that.
One guy lives in Fairmont.
Yeah. You can regulate like what we do at the county.
Yeah, I hate to cut that conversation. You know, and you want to. He drives his own, parks in the parking lot and drives his own.
Like, because we're. We'll cross this bridge when we get to it.
All right, very good. Do you guys have anything else for, Chief Lamar, do you have anything else for the council?
Uh, I just want to throw out that our take home program has been extremely successful, both in recruiting and retention, and also in that. We've had multiple situations where we've had to call officers in, they were able to respond from home. The night before Bacon Fest, we had a hostage situation where we had four officers that were able to respond. Due to having uh, take home vehicles, we were able to respond to the scene, so we had one ballistic windshield unseen and, and two more en route to that situation, so. Um, when it comes to the take home car conversation, it's been extremely beneficial, both to the citizens, uh, but also to the officers, so. Thanks for all of your, all of your hard work on it, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anything from you guys? Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. You're good.
Thank you, Chief Lamar.
Thank you, Mayor.
Um, so you guys have that sheet in front of you? For the PD, yeah, so it's, any items on there that you wish to change?
I'm good.
And I don't know what I do with mine, so. Print so many pieces of paper, the, apparently I didn't print that one, but I have it burned missing.
The PD one?
Yeah.
You wanna see it?
No, I have it right here on my thing, I just want to make sure, if we do, agent, I'll mark it on my fancy notebook. But any discussion on Chief Lamar's and the Delphi Police Department's budget proposal for twenty twenty five?
Good.
Okay, so it's a consensus that we move forward to. We'll get JT, you have a piece of paper there, uh. For one that says edit. Um, and you also have JT's contract and. JT's good. JT's was one page. Uh, so what JT? Put on there was the twenty twenty four proposal, speaking with JT, and he wishes to have these same, no changes. Other than uh, possibly a change to the facade program through the edit. Um, we took it way down to, what was it, fifteen thousand JT? The last year, that, that's what it's been, I guess, was fifteen thousand, so he was okay with the. Fifteen thousand, I think the Todd program's working out well, and uh, we got three new businesses that's coming to town that might utilize. You know, so it's, it's a matter of, do we want to up that or keep it fifteen thousand, but essentially, other than that, JT, everything was the same, correct? For, for the twenty four budget to twenty five, the same.
Just in addition to, I have totally increased his salary.
Okay, which was, did you put it on that sheet?
Because in the, the email I sent to you today.
Okay, but was it on the sheet? Because they, these guys got the sheet, that's what I needed, was the sheet to get to them.
So, uh, as Mayor mentions, uh, so just quickly on, and as of June the thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Uh, the ending balance on edit was three hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety two cents. Um, and uh, planning for this workshop and having conversation with per treasure price, through its monthly disbursements that come in. And so that three hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety two cents. As of June thirtieth, there's obviously monthly disbursements that come in, and the remainder of the year, then also will continue in twenty twenty five. Um, so the three items, uh, on the sheet for one is for the uh, community development and planning. Uh, the increase in salary there was the eighty two thousand, sixty nine dollars and twenty cents. Yeah, that was eighty two thousand, sixty nine dollars and twenty cents is proposed. Uh, for the Delphi Main Street, our twenty twenty four uh, contractor services. Uh, fifteen thousand was a lot of them cities to Delphi Main Street, to provide our mission. And vision and, and promotional economic vitality that we provide for the downtown area. Uh, in consultation with our Main Street Executive Committee, we will keep that fifteen thousand for twenty twenty five. We're what, twenty twenty four has been, and as Mayor did mention on the uh, facade grant program, which we have had some buildings. Take advantage of that, we've had some that have been wired on it, and so we also feel that fifteen thousand would be. Adequate for that, uh, that line item also for that facade program, and again, how that facade program works. Is they, they reach out, they uh, request the application, obviously, we have consultation with them, review the program, they complete the application. The application, then you come back to me, I then coordinate with our Delphi Main Street Design Committee, review the application. Make sure the application follows, uh, uh, follows the guidelines, and then prove the application. We don't have that. And then uh, for proving the application.
Quite to say, that's changing.
Building owner does the work on the building, pays the contractor, and submits receipts or reimbursement. And they then request the check, and then of course, the check request comes through city.
You're, so eighty two, what, give me the last three number again.
Eighty two thousand, sixty nine dollars and twenty cents.
I'm just slightly confused, because I don't, I'm looking at July year to date, but I'm not looking at like the twenty proposed.
Thing was the same.
Yeah, everything, yeah, so everything is staying the same, there's no, no changes. Yeah.
No changes.
Except the salary.
Right, okay, so what we, what was it, and what are we proposing? Because I didn't get that.
He, it's.
I'm sorry, JT.
Seventy five, nine ninety, correct?
That's what it currently is, okay?
Yes.
And.
The total salary for twenty twenty five is eighty two thousand, sixty nine dollars and twenty cents.
Eighty two thousand, sixty nine?
And twenty cents.
Okay, um, but nothing else changed, is what you're saying.
Everything else is the same.
Main tree, saw it.
Perfect, I just wanted to.
The salary goes to.
JT.
JT, that's the Community Development Director, that's what the one, 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 one is, out of the twenty two. Line item, twenty two sixteen, zero, one, 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 so. But other than that, so that's where the interesting part of. J, the sheet that JT gave, so it was part of the, had code enforcement in there.
Right.
Which might be Julie, where that, on that right side, it says fifteen hundred per month, but that was when it was just a contract, so obviously that.
That's gonna be.
That is gonna be zero now, because it's not a contracted position no more, so.
Eighteen gone, yeah.
Eighteen, yes, it's, yep. Any questions for JT? Uh, personal service, which one is that?
It's got like fifty five thousand aside, is that the total for the?
That was from twenty twenty one.
Oh, the.
The, the dark.
Doing the fifty five K.
That's the total for, yep. And that was twenty twenty one, yeah, so the darker numbers are the total, it goes twenty one, twenty two, twenty three. And the consensus for twenty four is what they approved last year. So. He's, yeah, they, he didn't request any changes other than his salary. No, that's the increase or dis, decrease for well, is consensus. And you guys have a. Full copy of the appropriation report and the master budget that shows what was spent and what, you know, so that's.
Trying to read that to say.
Yeah, yeah, so that, that way we know what was spent and all that, but any questions for JT?
Can you kind of explain a little bit about your job, just so if I, the public, everybody knows exactly.
Absolutely. Well, obviously, on the community development side, um, you know, we're closely with the, uh, with Mayor on, you know, tasks that come up, you know, for economic development. Uh, the residential housing projects, certainly work, again, closely with Mayor, closely with the EDC on. Uh, those meetings, and to see that, uh, see that progress, uh, you know, with residential development that we have, whether it's center or inner urban. Or uh, the balanced states. Um, in addition to the residential piece, uh, the economic vitality piece. For, you know, helping promote our businesses, meeting with our businesses in the downtown, working closely with our Delphi Main Street. Uh, you know, the Delphi Main Street does not have a staff person, and so uh, certainly, there, there's a percentage of my time that is, you know, helps the Main Street. And uh, to function more closely with our board of directors. Uh, with that, in the past, I've also worked closely with the code enforcement officer in that role, when that was contractual. And so I will work closely with the code enforcement officer we've had, and since we've not had one. Uh, since uh, November of last year, certainly, uh, we've been a lot more duties and responsibilities, specifically with that piece to code enforcement. Um, obviously regularly attending, uh, you know, economic development, uh, functions, meetings, ribbon fittings, groundbreaking. Ceremonies, um, also working closely with our parks board, uh, the parks master plan that we, uh, were able to get. Get established, uh, and approved for DNR. So now having that, we have grant opportunities that are available that otherwise the city was not eligible for. And so working closely with our parks board on projects like Movies in the Park, now have. I'm working on the grants to uh, help get a lot of the funding towards the Movies in the Park. Um, I'm also working with our parks board now on getting some sponsors for the Movies in the Park events, to help offset some of that cost. Uh, right now, as Street Superintendent Lyons indicated, I'm working closely with him on getting quotes for pickleball. That's something that came from the Parks Master Plan process, community surveys. And so uh, certainly have some grant opportunities lined up to be uh, preparing some grants for, uh, to try to get grant funding towards that. And so we'll continue to meet with contractors, get those quotes, and then get those grants submitted, and. And if we're playing for the best, but obviously, over the, the, the last few years, uh, working closely with the planning grant process to do the comprehensive plan. Uh, also prepared the grant through Department of Health to get our bicycle, pedestrian master plan, which we have now. Work with and look for projects and areas where we can improve our safety and connectivity with sidewalks and trails. Um, certainly grant opportunities, it is a huge piece of it too, they're out there, but you have to, you have to be. You have to be diligently searching for them, they're obviously very competitive, and so certainly preparing grants that are out there that help offset costs. And certainly with our Parks Master Plan, we have on the areas of the park that are old and antiquated. Uh, we also went through and did our ADA evaluation reports for all of our city facilities, including our parks. And so now having those ADA reports, um, certainly working closely for grant opportunities that are out there. So for ADA accessibility in our parks with some of our equipment, but also it's old.
Yeah, I would, I would also say too, a couple of things. One, in the contract that we were given for him, it actually lists his, lists his job. Yes. Specifics, and also every month, he, um, there's a report that comes in that we approve in the minutes of everything he does, and usually it's a full page. Full of everything he kind of just listed.
Yes, in addition to the monthly report, obviously, with the council package, well, I'll send you a file to report to summarize today, uh, where I've been, what's been, what's been done. And what's, uh, what's all of that.
Yeah, those report, those reports go out to to the website and they're they're put out there to for everybody to peek at them, so. Yeah, so there, we're we're the only municipality in the county that puts them. That's our department head reports online, so.
So you spend a lot of hours daytime, nighttime, which is whatever. Yes, just to go do it. Yeah, then also attending events, I mean, uh, helping out, you know, with our mainstream events. Um, and certainly with the grants. Um, again, you you've got to be diligent about one. Finding the grants that 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 kind of. Are applicable to the project, but they're competitive. And so getting grants prepared, letters of support, strategizing the best way to present the grant, because obviously if we get grant funding, we're able to secure it for a project. Oh, then it saves, that saves. Uh, and to get the projects done, so. Certainly, uh, uh, important to to have that and. And uh, I'm also a certified officer of community and rural affairs grant administrator, so. Something comes up on that piece on that side, some of the older grants that are out there, obviously I can. Certainly assist and work closely with Percy or. Or work closely with uh, with our team here to walk through those.
Yeah, so the your uh, your proposed budget for your salary is eight percent?
Yes, about eight percent.
I just. JD, I appreciate all the work that you're doing and everything, but I I have a hard time eight percent for you and only five percent for our super attendants. That's where I'm kind of like, uh, I don't want to make it seem like we're favoring one department over another.
We're gonna spend a whole. Chapter on all those, right? All once.
All at once, I think we discussed.
Is that what you wanted to do?
I think.
Yeah, so we're not separating it. We can kind of do it all and we're all in the same.
I think it makes sense.
So this may be brought back up again.
Yes, yes.
Well, races across the board.
Yeah, to where we're talking about nothing but races. Do you think that's a good idea? That we're, that's all we're focused on?
Sufficiency makes sense.
Yes, that's absolutely.
One, just in the consideration of that, it's the fact that I'm serving in this consulting role as Union Development Director, obviously I'm not entitled to. Uh, for metrics, so that's where that that number comes from. Certainly, I know, uh, uh, understand you all have that. Decision to make and it falls in your, your hands.
Okay.
Awesome.
Thank you, JT.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Oh, I was coming to you. I'm looking at this other police department thing. I don't want to go backwards, but I just noticed when I tested it out as well. Um, he, when he did this, and this was printed out, the car payment for next year. Was not put on the bottom of this.
It should be on, that's the, did you get the updated one? He sent it to me and you, so I I printed this, the newest one.
Okay. Which, but I'm not, I'm not seeing it on.
Just saw on.
It's on the bottom.
It's on the bottom?
Yeah. Cause he texted said he forgot, so he resubmitted and I printed the second, so he.
I just wanted to make sure that it was on there for everybody else. I know what he and I discussed today, but I just wanted to make sure.
It's on the other side.
I'm like looking at this and I didn't see it anywhere because he actually had a side note in there for car payment. And I knew that the one he sent me had it. Want to make sure that everybody else that had this one knew that that was also included.
Yeah.
Case they have the same thing I have.
It might be on the master one.
I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, what was that payment under?
It was fifty.
What line item?
Oh. You know. It's way near garage and motor or preference supplies. And then he had it for fifty of us.
Police cars. Right here, it's uh, eleven oh one, so fifty four thirty.
Right now.
And it's on page three of nineteen.
Fifty four thirty.
It's on the, the, um.
Yep.
The proposed budget, the bigger.
Yeah, so he has fifty eight. Five, five twenty seven.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
So now that we have everybody that was present, they've uh, been able to. Present their things. I think it's easier now that we start all on the same. If you guys want to do it by, uh, you you all got a copy of this, which is the. This is the master budget that was in a Microsoft Excel and I printed it off, so we can start at the very top and just work our way down. That way we're all on the same, we know when to change page. That sound like the easiest way to stay consistent and move it along a little bit? And you also have, are you guys? And that's on your master one that you got.
That's awesome.
Yep. So you guys agree that this faster one that you got, we start at the top and just start, we, that way we all know. And you also have, if you want to know the encumbered balance. And what's been expended, you have this. Uh, to show up. If you get a question, so. With that being said. Let me know when you guys are ready.
Ready.
No, the big one, the the one that has every single line item, the master, master budget. Should have, it's gonna be nineteen pages too. It's the master.
It's the big backpacket.
Yeah, so this was. Yeah, it's got nineteen pages. I didn't staple it for a reason, that way you guys. And it should have opened to get, so here's five of them, so you got them all over the place. So basically these green ones like this, so here's one of, here's one, here's two. Yeah, no, that's not it, that's the street department. So you have. Just do this, let me, you take mine. You take mine. It's all, that's all in order for you. And we will go down, um. Just. One by one. Starting with council salaries. Uh.
Ten percent increase.
I know for several year, you, several years, you guys have not had any kind of adjustments to your salary. I don't know that that's for that. Yeah, and I don't think that that's something that should continue because it's. Um, you know, we're, we're, we're making improvements in our street departments and our. Police departments and all that, and your guys has stayed idle for quite some time, so. I I, just my opinion as mayor, I think you guys. Should really review that to whatever consensus you come up with, but I think you do deserve.
What makes you think we deserve? I'm just curious with Cody's statement, cause he's been here longer than most.
I think the compensation is very fair for the amount of time and thought that you had to put it was. I think it's fair. My only issue with it is I'm, I'm okay with zero, like, right, not, not increasing, because we've been out like four years now that we're not increased it. When it comes to uh, election cycles and getting people to actually want to do this.
That is a thought.
But at the same time, I don't want people coming in just thinking that's for the money.
No, nobody, I don't think, unless bigger cities, they might do this for the pay, but I don't think smaller communities, you're, you're.
And we got real interested about increasing, we could increase before. We all go out or something, just if we can encourage people to run, but I think for what we do, how much time is bonus is fair.
I do agree.
And there's times that, there's times that we put in a lot of hours, like back when we did the grants for the business and stuff, I mean, I put crazy hours in, we're talking like, you know. We probably put twenty hours then to put on that project.
And you, you guys have a lot of meetings that just pop up, you know, we have special meetings and. And stuff like that as well, so.
But generally, I mean, I think it's, I think it's fair.
Okay, and that, that's my thing. I just wanted to put my two cents that I appreciate everything you guys do, so if it was discussed and you've. Fully had my support with it, so, but it's your. Your body and your decisions, but I wanted you to at least hear.
Sure.
My thoughts on it, so.
My thoughts, I think it's fair. I mean, I didn't do this for the money anyways. I did it on this actual, give back to the community.
Okay, so consensus on that one is to leave it at. The same?
Yep.
Um, any line items instead of going one by one? So, well, we'll just go one, so health insurance. Uh. Yep, so three, yeah.
Why doesn't it show that on here?
The health and fits, well, I'm just telling you what the health remains of the thing, the increase for health and fiscal premium is increasing.
Yeah, a lot of these aren't going to reflect things because we're still waiting on estate to send us stuff and all that, but so. Do you have that number duly by chance? The consensus was three forty, three forty two for twenty twenty four.
It says three twenty.
We go ahead and make that change. Just answer that.
Yep, absolutely.
So that way, that's another.
So three forty. Three forty two. Times point one two.
I totally agree, you go on my uh, category.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a good idea.
But I wanted to make sure the insurance will be nailed down because.
So what's the?
So three forty. Three forty two, three.
Twelve percent.
I got.
The alternative was nineteen.
So three eighty one, one eighty three, Julia or Julie. That sound right? About an additional forty thousand dollars at the twelve percent. So.
Going sixty three.
Yeah, and. Is that, you know. We have a new code enforcement positions, which is going to be. Yep, so I would.
One that might may possibly be added if they decide to be. But you have, remember, we also have.
Three forty, three forty two was the last year's consensus.
It will be adding.
Why don't we increase to fifteen? So here, so they come for another two employees.
That was proposed.
The consensus.
I would propose change, because that's what we changed it to last year.
So.
Yeah.
Okay.
Fifteen.
So you're gonna do fifteen percent, so that's gonna be what, three ninety?
Just thinking you have.
Now that's goodbye.
Yeah, three more officers that are probationary right now, once they.
They'll all.
Set. They have paperwork that they're gonna be turning in.
Yeah, so it's about three ninety one, three ninety three, yeah, so.
So three ninety one.
What was it? Three hundred ninety one thousand, three hundred ninety three. So that was the fifteen percent.
Yeah.
Uh. You know, you, I don't, you're never going to get an exact number on that because it's insurance, it's something that can fluctuate, so you might want to pad yourself a little bit, just in case. Completely. The fifteen percent.
How many employees does that insurance figure cover right now? Three people are covered.
Three, two.
Okay, so I think, I think we have the pad. Like if adding three or four more people, you do the ratio, I think the increase should be okay.
The fifteen percent.
I think that kind of adds up to me.
Okay, consensus fifteen percent on the insurance.
Agreed.
A lot of these are going to be. Uh, standard state equations or federally equations, the FICA. The perf, that's all built in, that's there's, um. There's equations for those, so that's going to be something that. Unless you guys see any changes. Uh, last year, the the consensus was five percent, which is usually what the cost of living in, right, for those areas, five percent is standard every year, so. Um. Anything on? Down to the personal services budget that you guys see the change other than the fifteen percent for health insurance? Is fifteen hundred good for you guys for seminars?
Uh. It's uh, training for.
That was newly elected.
Right, that was uh, one, two, three of you that. That won't come out for another three years unless you guys choose to go to any of the aim things that which you're.
And things were, it was awesome.
Yep, so those are always available, but yeah, so that was the reason why it was a little bit higher, because we went down in January with three, three new members.
You guys only produce that down to a dollar, so it doesn't fall off, but we keep it for a few more years and budget it for the next group.
If you take it down to a dollar and their name throws out a training or something that you guys all like, then you won't have anything to take it.
That's fair.
And and we.
Include yours. This is just.
No, hers is under her own budget.
Yeah.
This is specifically.
This is council. This is you guys as a board council. Yeah.
I thought I just.
Okay. So other than health insurance at fifteen percent, leave everything down to personal services as B.
Yeah.
Okay. Onto personal services budget. Um. Really, it's supplies and equipment repair, which is both zeros. Or it's both been, it's, I don't think there's been a change in several years, so I don't really see.
A need.
A need for. Changes unless you guys do, so if. For the council? I mean, you guys essentially use, unless you, the laptops are like two years old.
Two years.
Yeah, so.
Conversation safe, we, we talked about microphones to step in here and say.
Yeah, we're not going to be upstairs for. Uh, that, a long enough time to spend money to put microphones up here, because the. Plan is to go downstairs, which will be a discussion and. Once we get to that part of. Where, so phase four is renovating the. Area outside of Julie's office has council chambers. Yep, so that it's not on the second floor and we're ADA compliant. Yes, that's, we're gonna make you a special rank. Yeah, so that was kind of why I held off, and I know that was brought up by the public, but. The plan is to long term go downstairs and. You know, you start running wires for microphones and all that, so anything in your personal services budget?
Yeah.
No. Onto supplies budget, um, so starting with thirteen ten. Thirteen ten down to uh, this. Section of our supplies covers. Um, attorney, engineering. Property insurance, utility, street lights, as you can see on the. Uh, percent change. Computers was down thirty three percent because I believe you guys, that was when they. There was no, no purpose having all that money when new laptops were just bought.
Yeah.
So any changes from there down to the services? And charges budget line.
We'll put this together.
This is last year's budget. Yeah, so we're, we're, we're looking at the consensus line for what was passed last year to see if you want to change it.
Yes, truly, not more than anybody, just sitting there watching the numbers as we paste them.
Right. I honestly, um, like I know with the, with the health insurance being increased was there. I looked through some other things the other day and I was like, okay, so some of these things, if we have not expended anything. Then, because honestly, I can't tell you anybody that has turned in a negative mileage. Why, I mean. And yes, it's there and yes, based by state statute, we have to have it there and people can turn in for mileage, so.
Did any of you guys turn in mileage for your conference? I didn't turn any out, so I don't.
I didn't either. I also didn't turn anything for parking or anything, you know what I mean? I just didn't feel that, so.
Hundred dollar a mile. Better pull a budget into the.
But like, I don't, I mean.
Got property, vehicle insurance, um. Yeah, so there's line items on here that the council covers as a body that's not essentially conferences and, you know, like the. The hydrants and animal control and blood control and all that, that's incorporated into. Expenditures that are throughout the city that are. Specifically trainings and stuff like that, so.
And then we're gonna move to code enforcement, right?
Yeah, so the code enforcer expense, the, that's where that, Julie, that's the line that you brought up. It was forty five, it went to fifteen hundred.
Yeah.
Was that something we need to throw?
That's the one, that's the.
So do you what?
Was questioning as to whether it could be used. For, you know, to go towards. That could enforce their position, you know, what is that line item for? Because I'm feel, feeling like. We need to maybe check into that, see what, if it was used before, what it was used for, because it says ten dollars would use.
It probably wasn't before, but now that it's a full time position, you're gonna have a lot more responsibilities.
Right.
The chief said he built it in though, his chief.
It was on his, it was on his general.
When he was talking, he said, yeah, I already put that over here, dude, that was just the bones.
He did, he did, but I don't know that he probably looked at that and saw.
He didn't know it was a code enforcer expense, because when I mentioned it, he didn't act like he, yeah, that, he must have overlooked it.
Yeah, because there's several different break offs onto the code enforcement that had covered under general edit and council and, yeah, so.
So you want to leave it there, take it out?
We can just leave it there then.
I think the code enforcement thing needs to stay there.
Yeah.
Just in case.
Yes.
Just not used next year, then we can.
No, I agree.
Yeah, because. New position, a lot of.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
And then if he does find out, he's still gonna find, we got something to say, okay, well.
Yeah.
General land, the last item on that category, um, so briefly, I don't know what's. Progresses have been on cemetery expansion, but do we need to put some money in some sort of line item of land?
That's a great conversation piece because uh, they just finished with the and recorded the, um. Plot survey for the expansion of the land that was purchased by premiers. Um, Julie and I have dug into several things with how the plats were, the plots, plats or plots? That where you get buried. Um, how those were, people purchased those, and we found out that there was. Kinda all over the place, and Maryam, you can touch base on this if you want as well, because I know you were a large part of it, but.
We, we don't have to get into it, we think, I just wanna say, do we need to throw money at this to make this happen, essentially?
I mean, I think you're the line item. Your first cemetery, right above it.
That's maintenance, though, I believe.
That's for mowing, the mowing contracts.
I thought there was more cemetery line. Would have fallen the same.
There is, but it's probably not under the council.
Oh, right.
It'd just be under a general, a regular general. Mary, may I have anything to add on the cemetery portion that we've had several discussions on?
I, I would recommend that you put something in there, um, it's, unfortunately, it's difficult to know what you're going to need, um, you, you would have double the mowing, but like Cody said, that's maintenance. But getting it organized, figuring out, you know, process for selling, I don't know, I don't, you probably won't do much marketing. Um, but having some sort of forms or format for people to, um, purchase plots, if you do the process where you record deeds, that, that used to be a thing, I don't know that you need to do that. Um, but there's, there probably will be some onboarding cost into getting this new section of the cemetery up and running and available for selling plots.
Other bucks, uh, I would say twenty thousand, or twenty, and then if we don't even get a good back, cuz anything you're gonna do is probably be expensive, um. You talking about purchasing for the money to purchase the plot?
No, we already have a property, just twenty thousand to, if we have some sort of process to make these plots. Like a board, a board? A board's been discussed.
There to further that interest eventually, right? I do think we need the cemetery expansion badly, and there is a lot of demand for it, and lots will be much more expensive.
What did we spend the twelve thousand nine sixty-four, was that for, out of that line item, cuz that was in twenty twenty-four year today?
Now, I think that.
That was to finish the survey. Yeah, so they pin them.
I will tell you this, I had like at least three families that have come in and put themselves on a waiting list for, for the.
There's man.
But I also investigated from someone that suggested, because when I looked back in the cemetery book, some of those graves sold for eight dollars a piece.
Yes.
That was years ago, so the suggestion wants to sell them at five hundred dollars a piece with a hundred and fifty dollar perpetuation fee. Or an at-will burial, like some of the guys who are in the need, whatever, so with that being said, six fifty, because, and then with another six hundred that they would pay to the person who excavates, it does the.
So essentially, you'll make back up some of that money.
Yes.
Once that process is.
So maybe not, so just going back to the budget portion, I would just suggest twenty thousand dollars.
Under land or?
Land, yes, to carry out any sort of thing that we eventually want to use it for. Doesn't that seem just a little high since we haven't purchased and surveyed?
Well.
I'm gonna.
I don't know.
It's already been, it's already been done and surveyed, I didn't know twenty thousand.
If you guys wanna do ten, that's fine, I would just say, let's throw some decent money in there.
As I say, I wouldn't, I would probably do ten.
Yeah, ten thousand, no problem.
Uh, if I might, might, there might be suggestions there, you might want to put a driveway in, you might want to do some fencing, you might want to, um, have some signage. In that, you could have some initial expenses.
Might go back to the point thousand pretty quick.
It takes it right, so.
Very good point, Mary.
Does have to be all done in twenty twenty-five, that's true.
Yeah.
But if you start selling plots, it probably gets done, but even if you put a main driveway in there, it's gonna cost you that crap down.
By the time you get to trucking and the stone, yes. Yep.
So what are we?
I would suggest twenty thousand, again, if we don't use it, we don't use it, right? I'm just saying like nothing's cheap, right? And I do think that the city desperately needs.
So we said twenty, we came back to ten, how about fifteen?
Okay, there you are, fifteen thousand.
So we went from ten, Mary, I don't know if you heard, but we went from twenty to ten, and then we heard your, uh, input and went to fifteen. And that's, you know, for one fiscal year, if that doesn't cover, then obviously the next year we can revisit and, and do more.
I agree, I think you will know a lot more this time next year about what it's gonna cost to run this.
Okay. Okay, any other line items under supplies budget for council that you see needing change? All right, services and charges budget, um. Administrative assistant, this first line item's obviously gonna go back to when we get to the salary or the, yeah, the salary discussion till we, we'll get to that point once we're there, miscellaneous cleaning supplies. Um. Twenty-two hundred, Julie, we changed some things, that, that's for. Yeah, it's, it's tricky on these because you never know, everything goes up, the cost of everything goes, goes up, so city building cleaning supplies.
I'll just do that after. I'll say those on the, like, on the, the, like, supplies for the buildings, I've actually made some cuts there as well. For like paper towels and tissues, things like, and things like that, I've actually, I'm like, I, I've cut that, like, my third one of us.
I, I have a legitimate question on that, I was just joking.
We've expended forty, we have forty-seven percent of that left this year.
Believe it the same. Yeah, I would say.
Go ahead, Doyle.
No, it sounds like she's looking to get deals versus somebody coming and said, all right, well, there's been city charges.
Yeah, we, uh.
You're shopping, you're trying to find deals and that saves us.
It's the same thing with our first aid kits, they were coming, uh, you know, I said, we don't need you to turn that off since the first aid kits, we're not emptying those. We're not, I get that things get updated, like medications and stuff, that's okay, but I don't think a band-aid is gonna get outdated in six months.
No.
You know what I mean? A band-aid is a band-aid, so I'm like, hmm, we don't need that much service that often.
So.
Cut that nap too, I said, we'll call you, we need you.
Good.
So janitorial, we have someone that cleans, um, twice a month, and that, I think the. Um, I didn't start, she didn't start till about what? We cleaned for first couple of months.
Yeah.
So that, it's gonna be close to being about perfect for years in, so I, I would recommend having that, I, and I opened it, uh, just didn't get anybody at one, it was a part-time position, but. When Carol left, there was nobody that wanted to, to, to do it, so the, the. Yeah, that's the cleaning of the city, she was just here yesterday, yeah, so does a great job, um. Me and Julie tried to do it for the first couple of months and then found out, wow, you don't have time to do it, so, yeah, we paid the part-time person twenty-some dollars an hour to do it, so. Um, onto miscellaneous repairs, so do you guys see anything under the budget portion of. From administrative assistant down to miscellaneous repairs that need change for?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, onto mayor's budget, so we won't talk about the first part, summer intern, uh, I did have an intern this year. Um. I asked former mayor Worley how she did it, and it's kinda one of those where you, you do the scheduling based on the intern you get, right? So the intern I had this year was very active in the community, four H and several things, so I let her basically pick her hours, and then we add them up all at the end and, and bait it, uh. We did a joint thing with the EDCs, she worked for both of us, so the twenty-five hundred was, I think we paid her fifteen because it wasn't every single day, it was, uh, three or four days a week, so I think that twenty-five hundred's. About perfect, because you're not gonna get anyone that's gonna work. It's right, someone right out of high school is not gonna work every single day before they're going to college or whatever they're doing, so, um, I did not change that, the only, um. Change I had under my budget was the, um. It's actually the seminars, so every seminar and training I went to this year has mentioned, uh, that their cost is gonna go up. I just returned from mayor's conference in Madison, and obviously, they, when they put these things on. They're doing it now, but it's gonna go up, so I just requested. Um. Yeah, so for seminars, I, it was two thousand last year, I am requesting the twenty-five hundred.
I didn't show that on here, still has two thousand.
Yeah, cuz I don't know why it didn't say.
You put it on promotional?
Yeah, so it's not on promotional, yeah, so.
Oh, wait.
Yeah, so.
It went down to promotional, actually.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, he put, I think he put it in the.
Yep, so promotional is gonna stay the twenty-five hundred. Or the promotion is gonna stay the three, is it three thousand last year?
Thousand.
Yes, promotional stay three thousand, the seminars and training, I'm just up in five hundred bucks, just because, again. By the time you get, there's a lot of conferences that Julie and I have to go to, just to stay on top of all the legislative changes and all that, so. Yes, yes, I don't purchase a whole lot, so I don't need anything, if I have to, I go borrow from another office, so I don't need any additional, yeah. Or I'll go down to Julie's and use hers, yes. Yeah, I have a lot of Ju- Julie's folders in my office, but no, that's the only reason why that line item is just because every conference I've been, even the one we went to in January, they said, you know, they were talking about, you know, we can barely put these on at the cost we're doing it now. So it just, it's the world we live in, and five hundred dollars would probably still be close, but I'm gonna short myself going to one this year, just because I've now used. My entire line item for that, obviously because we had the one in January that I will have to go to, or you guys won't have to go to for three years, so other than that, that's the only change I had for under mayor.
Well, I might have to go again this year.
Any incentives to yes or no on the five hundred dollar change for seminars and training?
Yes, yes.
Yes, okay, so that's the only line that everything else will stay the same, onto. Julie, the clerk treasurer, Julie, I'll let you take your, your area, if you have any changes or any requests.
I don't think we need anything in office, whether it's that's done. Off of all, during testing, I did that, like, when they say, bring them there or whatever, so, and I know that we have to face. I think we have somebody in progress, but I think other departments have that as well, for the out on our.
I saw that.
So, yeah, so we're good there, um. Software maintenance, I will tell you the software thing is gonna be a big.
Yes.
Change, because after speaking to Keystone this weekend, having a three-way meet with them, we pay a little over fourteen thousand dollars for our software, but that software. Has not been like. We haven't had an, an uptick in the cost of it, we're having updated, and go after speaking to them. It would be forty-five thousand dollars a year, so that, three, between three and four thousand dollars in market, or the Keystone, the upgrade, that includes the bill and the pay process. Yeah, so they went from over fourteen, and I checked into other software companies, and Frye is even more expensive, it's about fifty grand a year.
So we have to pay somebody constantly each month.
We have to pay them to keep up our utility billing, our fund, all the things that keeps track of everything that we need, so it's like right now, same work, the houses here. Your business reports, Keystone is very good, but we can go in, get reports that need to be, that being said, update, just do that. Cause their billing practices, whatever, I just spoke to them today, we don't have to take the billing part of it, which is called like voice to voice. Where they bill the client instead, or the customers instead of us, Donna would like to keep it so that she sends the bills, which we have that option, so that maybe, that may lower the price as well. And he said he can reach me some more numbers, but if the whole package deal, the whole package deal is forty-five thousand something, so it was fifty-three, four thousand dollars a month.
What line item, so that, is that your, uh, software maintenance, forty-three sixty?
Well, across the board, it gets divided per department. So it's not completely out of that line item, but that is a portion of, yes, for, for the clerk's office.
How much more do you think it needs to go up?
Well, until Parker, until Parker gives me the numbers for taking out the billing part of it, but leaving the payout, fund, payroll, utilities. I mean, he's, they, they had training today at Voice, and so he couldn't get me, but he did send me, um, that information for the package deal, which is forty-five. Uh, the billing itself was twenty-five, and that wasn't with any of the utilities, fund, anything like that that we use on a regular basis now. That being said, we have asset in that program, but no one's ever used it. And then we paid Michael to access, which totally didn't make any sense to me, so I'm thinking, why wouldn't we do the assets? Amanda went to training today that was absolutely free for Voice, she learned about assets.
So you could.
Yes, we can get rid of the, having to pay somebody to do assets. And Voice said they would be willing to help us get those assets in there, maybe do like a data dump, get them in there, and then Amanda and I.
Get them established.
Yes, because at a hundred and seventy-five to two hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour within the minimum of a hundred hours, or however many hours, I say, you know, cut that cord, be done with it, that would save us some.
You wanna wait till she gets the numbers finalized for that specific line item?
I think it'd be a good idea for Parker to give me, like, you know, across the board, more of a, of, of.
Right, cuz you gotta know how much more it's gonna, do that versus how much you're saving for your.
Like I said, I just had a meeting with them this week, and they said, okay, we just need to figure out what modules you guys need, what the upgrade is, because they're working on payouts and things like that.
At this point, you have no idea.
Well, I mean, if you do the whole package deal, it's forty-five thousand, a little over.
But there's bits of pieces that we may not use, so.
And then that's like the, if you've got somebody that's doing a chunk of it, how much do we save, like get rid of it, or does it cost us more money?
Right, so basically, in that shelf, I don't know how long, we've been double paying, we pay for the asset module, we may pay somebody to do the assets. So getting rid of one or the other, if we're gonna do the assets, it would save us none longer for the software.
Anything else on your clerk treasurer budget that, that reflects any change from?
Training's the only thing that I was gonna ask for anything, because when you looked at the seminar and training for clerk treasurer, there are, it was set at twelve hundred dollars. And there's already been twenty-three sixty-two expended, and that wasn't all of the expenses, like some of those I took out of my pocket, because I was like, I'm not doing that.
Yeah.
But that was just seminars and hotel.
Yeah.
So with that being said, there are, I mean, the SBOA requires so many hours of.
Five thousand?
Mm-hmm, I mean.
Five thousand, make it.
Yes, I mean, that would be, that would be very.
Very.
I liked that mine then.
You have to share with, uh, Donna and Amanda too, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so five thousand might be pushing it, well, the, again, the, be a little bit higher this year because.
Fifteen in there, and you said, how much would you go?
I don't know how you would buy with twelve.
Like, I have already been, so twenty, twenty-three sixty-two is what we, what I have.
And that's with you.
And that.
Covering some of the costs.
Yes, and that was with me covering parking deals.
But that doesn't include, um, like, anyone else in your office, that's just you door numbers?
That didn't include the other two.
Mm-hmm.
Any other changes other than, um. Your training and seminars, and then we'll wait for you to crunch some numbers for the software?
Like, we replaced Donna's this year, we were just gonna plan on doing one at a time, Amanda's will probably be the next one, and then another budget here, possibly mine, depending on where we're at.
Okay.
And I didn't wanna extend that too much, because I don't.
Oh, and I'm glad you said that. Uh, in your guys' packet. Your massive packet, the SPID, there's a quote in there for a computer, it's titled Maryland's Computer. For seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars, and seats, yeah, plus the monitor of a hundred and twenty-seven. That's, that's not under, this, so would Maryland's computer come out of general, or would it come out of? Per computer, uh, brand says it's, it's time for it to be updated, it's very old, but does that come out of the city building, or is that, that wouldn't come out of the mayor by doing it?
No, we can only take that out of the building maintenance part of. Can we come out of the maintenance or building supplies?
For the general?
Yeah, for general.
Do we already go over that one?
No.
Miscellaneous office supplies.
Is that twelve-ten?
Yeah.
So for that one, I would request, um.
Add another thousand zero.
Yeah.
Yes. So twelve-ten, we're gonna take from three thousand to four thousand, so we can replace. Maryland's computer, my computer's fine, but I'm glad you mentioned that, sorry, Alex.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Can I ask a question real quick, potentially? I don't know how this works, cause this is my first year doing this, but just thinking about. If like, we're trying to move money, or take money from somewhere to like, cover things, if, since that's in that same grouping, if. A thousand could come out of the code enforcer expense, or do we not wanna move that at all?
That was the one that we. Is that the one that's staying, or?
That we were keeping the line item, which only ten was spent, right?
Fifteen hundred.
And it was fifteen hundred in it, but the, the thought was to just keep that completely the same, because we aren't sure it's.
So take that one to five hundred and move.
Well, that's what I was asking, but they, Cody and Julie kinda gave me a, don't, just leave it.
Yeah, so we figure out what, maybe what, we might use it for the code enforcement part, so, no, that's a good question.
Yep.
Uh, anything else for clerk treasurer price in your office? Okay, so we will wait to hear what numbers you come up with for the software. Next on there is the police department, which we have already covered. Uh, we have already heard from Aaron, Street Superintendent Lyons.
Airport, though, didn't it?
No, so we will go to the airport, and you guys actually had Nagel and the aviation board. Uh, submitted and passed within their board their proposed budget, and you guys have that sheet as well. It's a one-sheet page. Um, and I didn't see, I browsed through it, I didn't see any changes.
Yeah, it's not.
Yeah, so. Uh, the airport's a unique board where they, obviously, we, we fund a lot of the things that they do. Um. But they also get a lot of funding from the FAA, so. But there, everything that I looked at is things that they, they have to have, obviously. Fuel went up, and, and they're working on some things out there as far as a comprehensive plan, which hasn't been redone since nineteen eighty-four, I believe. Um, but. I did not see anything just on my end that stuck out as. Not needed.
And they changed the fuel supplier, and so that helped them save, so that was a good thing.
I have no concern.
Neither.
So, the sheet that you guys have here is consensus is, all the aligned items that's on this. Are good?
Yeah.
Back to the general budget. Another item that you guys have, and this is something that we actually got dealt with firsthand last week was. Uh, our software within the city of Delphi's servers. Um, I've spoke with Doyle. And it's to the point now, where Brand Tech says, if after this year, there's nothing that's gonna be under warranty. Uh, we just replaced a, a piece, I don't wanna say too much on a whole lot of it, but. We did replace something last week that was something we could not wait for. But, uh, he did send a proposal for what it's gonna take, and what he strongly recommends that we upgrade. In a twenty-twenty-five fiscal year, because every, again, everything is, it's to its date of. No longer being able to, to do anything with the warranty, and then you're essentially, you're spending more money on things, so. You have that quote, it's the second quote you have from Brand. Correct, and that's for, it's, it lists out everything, it's, uh, servers.
This would not have anything to do with. Me either, server nor the programming, but earlier.
No.
No.
No, this is.
That's right, this is the actual server, computer part of it.
The backs, the backs up our hard drive, um, everything. Uh, so where we keep all our logistics, our emo, all our data. And Doyle's very fluent in this, this area. When it gets to a certain point, you don't wanna wait, because in the event of. What has happened to the city of Columbus, you know, you wanna keep your infrastructure on that, in the cyber world, very strong. Not that ours isn't strong, it's just to a point where the warranty's up on it, and if stuff starts to fail. We're gonna pay for it. Either way. And will you be able to get what, what you need at that point? Most likely no. So, a strong suggestion from, uh, Phil, from Brand. And again, we just replaced something last week, because, um, he sent us a message saying that.
Uh, just have cybersecurity in the software also for this, or is that a separate?
I think that was the different.
That was probably in that brand tech.
Like our, like our utilities and things like that, that can.
This, the quote that we have is for the equipment. Again. I think the last time this stuff was repla- replaced has been. And it, I know it was before anybody was on discount, so correct? And, so. The line item that, that's obviously a city building expense that would come out of the general fund. Julie, would that be? Would that be a twenty-three sixty?
Miscellaneous repairs.
Yeah, or, I don't know that that would be it, I think miscellaneous repairs would be. Maryam, do you have any insight to what line, I, I think we talked about this, you were here last time it was, or no, you wasn't here with, last time it was changed down.
No, I don't have anything to add on that.
Yeah. That's, so that tells you how long it's been since it's been. Upgraded.
So, yeah, what line item were you?
Uh, some looking under the general. It's so miscellaneous repairs is a broad. Well, that's just for that, that, that's just for Keystone.
What, what are you thinking?
That's, that's Julie's software, so. No, we're talking about, now we're talking about the. Replacing our. I guess the first question is, do you guys agree that it's.
Necessary.
Something to, to get.
Yes.
Changed, instead of taking the chance of. Um, letting something critical happen to our cyber world.
I agree, if it's ancient technology, it's probably nice.
And that's what he says is, is gonna be our problem if we, if we wait, cause we're already, I think, everything's. At the end of this year, the warranty's up. That's it, so. Now, we just need to pick the line item to expand.
Doesn't it make the most sense to do it under the city building?
That's, that's what I was looking at, but there's. So Julie, the ten thousand under twenty-three sixties for your Keystone, correct?
Yes, no, 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 Keystone was.
Or does it have a separate thing on yours?
It have, I have separate on my mind, but each department pays.
A portion.
Their portion of the software.
So.
So that would be a function for my office, yeah.
Essentially, this is, I thought we had a, a, a line item that was tied to computers for the city board.
I just passed her. Can we make an agreement?
There's one right here, uh, thirteen twenty-two.
Putting twenty-five thousand.
That's under the council, common council.
Yes.
Huh?
I think that's a good.
I would like to just say, we should put twenty-five thousand dollars into a line item to.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, that's.
That's fair.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, and then for this part of it, though, um, when we go to the second workshop to, you know.
We'll have all this, clean, this'll be cleaned up your next session that reflects everything that we've done today, with everything else is zeroed out, so yes.
So pick a line item, put twenty-five K in it for the server stuff.
Okay, yeah, and it'll probably be, honestly, it'll probably be a common council line item that's out of the general, just because it has. Different computer, like it has equipment repair, it has. Um, computers is thirteen twenty-two, so we'll, we'll divvy that out, um.
Sounds good.
Yeah, okay.
Sounds good.
Very good, we got the airport covered.
Won't take like a little five minutes.
Yeah, I was gonna say, cause I, yeah, so we'll take a five-minute break. Maryam, we're gonna take a five-minute break.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, thank you.
I charting.
Yeah.
It's Julie and I will.
I saw highway relinquish, did we cover that seven, page seven? That's all Aaron's so. Then that was JT.
And then that it was JT.
Mm-hmm, then firemen, we haven't done that.
So next, next question, before we get too far, are we talking, are we unmuted now?
Yes.
Okay, CMMG, I know Aaron's, we got a line item for that, but personally, I think we need to have somewhere around five hundred thousand for CMMG for matching grants. Um, that gives us the equivalent of two million dollar grant. Cause we.
Does that go out?
So, and this one, it probably came out of rainy day, but I don't think it needs necessarily. Not a rainy day, and I would like the board to come, if we can figure out a way to get that incorporated in, cause obviously I wanna get a CMMG grant again next year. So we get more.
So, is that something we don't have to bond, we have money.
So yeah, so basically that, that's our matching for the grant itself, because the grant requires a quarter, twenty-five percent of it. So if we do five hundred thousand, that gives us almost two mil-, that gives us two million dollars a grant, up to two million dollars. So, two million dollars worth of work for five hundred thousand.
So this year, we were gonna pay minimum three hundred thirty-three thousand. And well, that was because of cut something completely separate. But all the bids come in a little bit higher than the engineering bid, so you can expect that again in January, so I think Spencer's point is accurate. But, the, the way that was bid by the winner of the bid was uh unusual, and it tipped the iceberg to where it, they outbid it to where there was no way for us to be able to do it, because it would have took more city funds than we wanted to for the match process.
Well, speaking of the they have plans in the city budgets, start paying bonds off early or anything, before we're dead, we can pay it off and save the citizens' interest. And I brought that up to the old mayor, a bunch of them pass out, but this is something we're responsible for now. And the more bonds we have matching things, the more interest we'll pay in, because we're wrapped in borrowing, not like, that's what you're talking about, you said.
No, it's not.
There are some of them that's almost to the end of their life, we got the twenty thirteen is close to being paid off, that was what's had an SRF or not an SRF, but there's a couple of them that's getting paid down pretty good.
And that's good, that's what we need to.
But we've had them since twenty thirteen, so.
At least we borrowed the better, it's kinda like a credit program as well.
But at the same time, though, what work are we wanting done?
But what line item are you guys thinking for the CCMG to be up from what Aaron proposed to? He, he has a line item under streets.
That's what I'm saying, are we looking in that area for his?
Yes, cause he has the line item that says community crossings.
Yeah, it's um eighty-four thirty-nine on page three. I think, wait, no, that was from two or three, so it's a decrease, nevermind, wait, here it is. I see engineering on eighty-three twelve, is that what you're thinking?
Engineering is gonna be separate, that's engineering is gonna incorporate into the CCMG, but we, this will be for our match, it's, it's labeled CC.
About this, yeah, MBH General Buildings.
Where are you looking at?
That's on page five.
Is it page five?
You say grant match, would that be it?
Oh, MBH General Building, is that where you're at?
Yeah.
Covers some of the, he, he said it was for CMMG, and then also the bed overlay for like when we have to do crack ceiling and stuff.
Yeah, he uses part of his personal budget, or not personal, but his department budget, but.
The community crossing. So he had one in Missouri too.
Oh, here it is, yeah, fourteen thirty-two.
We're at fourteen thirty-two.
Yeah, page five.
Oh, you're in MBH. So that's a hundred and fifty thousand that he has.
He's saying five.
Well, because is he gonna encumber what we had for this year, was it, did he mention?
No, but can we call him and ask him?
Because we, we had money set aside for this year that obviously we're not gonna use now.
Yeah, cause that's the three hundred thousand, cause we have three, cause we were, the bid came over three hundred thousand more than what we wanted to spend, right?
Correct, so where was the money for that?
I can't remember which.
Where it was put.
Because it was.
It was in last year's budget for the.
Community Crossing fifteen.
From where?
Rainy day, with looking at yourself for rainy day, and I don't wanna do that again.
But the consensus is, we wanna put a hundred, we wanna put five hundred thousand once we find that line.
Yeah.
We wanna add, add.
Because Aaron might wanna break it up into different things like he mentioned during the.
I wanna be able to go up and say, we have five hundred thousand for matching grant.
Yep, I think it's a good safe net.
So did you, did we just, are we saying we started in that spot?
I had to figure out what line I'm era wants to put it on, because if he's gonna encumber the three hundred thirty-three thousand we have from this year, we only need to put a hundred fifty thousand.
Yeah, and then, here we go.
So.
No, cause we still have that grant match.
We didn't use our grant match that we was gonna use for the twenty twenty-four dash one.
Some thousands.
Three hundred thirty-three thousand, yep.
Alright, so.
So you're gonna figure that out.
I'm gonna get with Aaron and see how he wants to structure that, but if you guys are good with the consensus of five hundred, which might mean we only have to do a hundred fifty if he encovers the, the money that, yeah, so I wanna see him on how that structured.
I think there's a lot of things coming down the pipe.
Yeah, that's, that's not anything to do with CCMGs, that's all stuff that'll be coming in, water, utilities and stuff like that, once, not immediately, but it was discussions at the, at the.
The overall financial. Is that correct, Jim?
For what? For CCMG? That was asking.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna jump in there and say though, after like Amanda and I looked at some things, there were a couple of times when those, those funds where they were earmarked for more than one thing, said, we're gonna use it for this, but we're gonna use it for this, and she and I looked back at some of the finders that we have for CCG for some other things, and they were like, even in like ordinance resolutions, they were, they were earmarked for a couple of different, the same money was earmarked.
For more than one.
For more than one thing.
And that's a problem.
It, yes, it was a problem, so. I mean, I would try to, like to try to avoid that at all costs, so I, I feel like Spencer's on.
That's not really easy to do the CCG though.
No, but I.
There's several different avenues on.
I just wanna have one fun.
I'm just saying, it's a good idea, he's got the right idea by doing that, so we, if we put in for that again, like, you know, we, we reject these businesses, I'm putting in for again, at least our match part of it, we don't have to worry about where, you know, yes, we can do that, we can map, we have it.
That's why I was asking about.
Yeah.
Good to do that.
Yeah.
We, we would have to.
We already have it, we already have it, but it's at a zero now, so that's why I wanna get with Aaron and see how we, we can put it under one line item, but we don't need to create, we have enough as it is, it's confusing with the line items that were created that we don't use. But we don't wanna trade it.
The other hundred and fifty or two hundred.
Right.
We'll have to work that out, and we'll have it first.
I'm with you on the number, which I guess is two million dollars, if we got it, it's touching with us something we know.
Please, MBH, there's Aaron, there's Aaron.
I think we're on page ten for fire.
Okay, you guys have the fire department budget separated and sent to you that was passed by the fire territory board. Saying we started in that spot. I had to figure out what line I'm era wants to put it on, because if he's gonna encumber the three hundred thirty-three thousand we have from this year, we only need to put a hundred fifty thousand.
Yeah, and then, here we go.
So.
No, cause we still have that grant match.
We didn't use our grant match that we was gonna use for the twenty twenty-four dash one.
That was three hundred some thousand.
Three hundred thirty-three thousand, yep. Alright, so.
So you're gonna figure that out.
I'm gonna get with Aaron and see how he wants to structure that, but if you guys are good with the consensus of five hundred, which might mean we only have to do a hundred fifty if he encovers the, the money that, yeah, so I wanna see him on how that structured.
I think there's a lot of things coming down the pipe.
Yeah, that's, that's not anything to do with CCMGs, that's all stuff that'll be coming in, water, utilities and stuff like that, once, not immediately, but it was discussions at the, at the.
The overall financial. Is that correct, Jim?
For what? For CCMG? That was asking.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna jump in there and say though, after like Amanda and I looked at some things, there were a couple of times when those, those funds where they were earmarked for more than one thing, said, we're gonna use it for this, but we're gonna use it for this, and she and I looked back at some of the finders that we have for CCG for some other things, and they were like, even in like ordinance resolutions, they were, they were earmarked for a couple of different, the same money was earmarked.
For more than one.
For more than one thing.
And that's a problem.
It, yes, it was a problem, so. I mean, I would try to, like to try to avoid that at all costs, so I, I feel like Spencer's on.
That's not really easy to do the CCG though.
No, but I.
There's several different avenues on.
I just wanna have one fun.
It's a good idea, he's got the right idea by doing that, so we, if we put in for that again, like, you know, we, we reject these businesses, I'm putting in for again, at least our match part of it, we don't have to worry about where, you know, yes, we can do that, we can map, we have it.
That's what I was asking about.
Yeah.
Sure, we, we're good to do that.
Yeah.
We, we would have to.
We already have it, we already have it, but it's at a zero now, so that's why I wanna get with Aaron and see how we, we can put it under one line item, but we don't need to create, we have enough as it is, it's confusing with the line items that were created that we don't use. But we don't wanna trade it.
The other hundred and fifty or two hundred.
Right.
We'll have to work that out, and we'll have it first.
I'm with you on the number, which I guess is two million dollars, if we got it, it's touching with us something we know.
Please, MBH, there's Aaron, there's Aaron.
I think we're on page ten for fire.
Okay, you guys have the fire department budget separated and sent to you that was passed by the fire territory board. One item that has been discussed now for each meeting is the fire hydrant rental fee of five thousand dollars. Well, we have to, because he did, I know.
Because they've left it off your budget.
I know.
So.
Though.
We're waiting to see if that.
We're gonna, Miriam is gonna be at the, yeah, so we're working through Miriam and some. Settling the part of the old contracts and all that, so that's why Chief Doolan left it off of this, his budget. We don't have that finalized yet, so I was I don't know if it's gonna take a joint meeting between the council and the territory board to just kinda get everything out and open with, between both boards, or what the solution will be, other than I think both bodies need to be in the same room. But other than that, I don't.
Yes, we'll know more on that once we find out from Miriam, right?
It's not really Miriam, Miriam's our representative, they hired a separate attorney.
And they, yeah, and they come back and said they didn't have to do it, we're seeing what our attorney says to see if we have to.
Right.
They haven't.
And that's where.
She says yes, then now we got a little.
The tricky part of it is, is we're utilizing part of our legal budget for this, that we've already nibbled a lot of for the trial and things like that, so we don't, not that we're, I'm not saying we don't use it, but we just need to figure out the quickest way to get resolved, man, if that means getting everybody in the same room.
Well, and if it helps you with the SDO AD here, this was last week, that was another avenue that I also asked that same question to. And so they kind of checked in as well, I sent the questions to them and got responses back. And one of the response back from them was, you know, what did your, what did your city attorney say about this, because this is what we think. So before we put that all out there and whatever, when we find out from Miriam, we're got processes with it, and if we have a fire here, we're moving tomorrow. We, we did take the five thousand dollars for the fire, fire hydrant rentals this year, because it was budgeted in last year, so five ordinance laws, as they all sign, whatever for budgets and everything was signed and.
So that's just effects next year.
It, yes. So I, I just simply said, whether this is on there or not, will be, you know, a decision between council and whatever, because.
Can we just leave it out, and then if we get it, we can bring it as well?
It's a, it's a line item, so once the decision's made, it's already been left out, we can just add it if that's what the.
It's a, yes, and that's somebody's problem.
That's it, yeah. I think we can revisit this next week, once we find out for sure, because I'm, I'm gonna be honest with you, I think they need to be paying, because I don't wanna pay for the other council stuff when they're not paying for their own, you know, paying for, I feel like the city's paying for more than.
I spent, while they got into the situation, it's with the state laws and rules, it's it's almost gotta be a medium situation, so you know, if you're gonna charge them, what will they actually use, it gets really complicated.
Yeah.
Passed, we said, okay, they rounded it off, said, okay, let's just do that, that should cover everything, we'll have good years, bad years, but that's fine. But now, with our situation, it's, it's getting very, it's very complicated.
Do you guys see anything else on the fire department budget, other than the five thousand dollar hydro, hydro rental that was left blank to be resolved, uh, that needs to be questioned, or again, this was passed by the fire territory board, not last month, the month, or, no, it was actually last month, so, yep, so.
So is this the one that included personnel being on the station?
The page system is the one that they were talking about, right?
Is that the forty thousand?
The forty seven, they had it forty-seven.
What line is it on?
It doesn't have, yeah, it would be.
It's, it doesn't have a line item.
Have a line item, if you go partially down on the fire.
Cause they're trying to get it as a non, not-for-profit.
Forty, forty-seven thousand is what they're.
Yes, they're, they're trying to get that position paid by a, establishing a non-for-profit. Yeah.
It talked about a grant at one time.
Yeah, at the very front page, third and ten down, just up from the bottom a little ways, five up. Fire fighter.
Gotcha, alright.
Well, that.
Any questions? No, there's nothing in the fire service's sheet, so when it comes to equipment repair and all that, there's nothing can't really budget for the unknowns, and equipment is outrageously expensive, so. Any questions on the fire department budget at this moment, other than the hydrant rental? Okay. Moving on. I gave him my sheet, so I'm not even sure where.
That's, yeah, that should, that's, see if they're, they're, they're says.
Colleagues.
We already did that.
That's right, rainy day, page thirteen.
And then we get through that.
I don't have a page number, cause I guess, so. What is it, rainy day?
Day, yep. Right before Riverboat, right after Colleagues.
Okay. So. This sheet reflects the consensus for twenty twenty-four, which was three percent change, and that's again, that, that's where the part of that CCG came out of, again, Spencer mentioned keeping it uniform into one account, so. Last year was a three percent change. Uh, the balance, the current balance for rainy day. Was, I think, what, Julie, six hundred? Six hundred some thousand?
Let me get there.
Rainy day. It's more than three hundred thousand, I know that.
Oh, my bad. Why does it say in the rainy day, three hundred thirty-seven, that's not right.
Oh, I mean, what page is it?
When your preparation report is on page six.
Let me go to my office, I have the, like that, I may have just sent it, has C thirty, read the notes preparation.
Now. Rainy day has.
Says five seventy-five, no, that's in the beginning.
That's what, what it was, it says current.
Oh, that's current.
That's the current, this is the current in the, in the rainy day, that's the current.
Alright.
As of today's date, cause I ran this report today.
So which one's the current?
The current is the, is the five seventy-five.
It's on page six of the separation report, under the current.
We also have the option of.
It was five seventy-five, you're right.
You know, resolution, um, every municipality can, you know, resolutions.
Taking fifteen percent of your general, your overall balance and appropriated into your rainy day, which we've tossed around a few times, but then some things came up, so we payload that off to, we're now, we're gonna be doing it in September, right? We revisited that? For the DLGF, so it's not, you don't have to use the full fifteen percent of whatever your, your past budget was, but again, I'll get you guys that stuff before that meeting, it's a resolution in full language, but, so for other capital outlays and then capital outlays. Um, last year, there was a three percent change. So it went from twenty twenty-two, it went from two hundred eighty-one thousand to five fifty-seven. It just depends if we, again, how we wanna do the CCMG structure and the ready, the ready, in my opinion, so we, this year, we didn't do the six hundred twenty-five for the trail, you guys were uh, nice enough to let us take that to where, to Bowen, in which we still need to take that six hundred twenty-five thousand and put it into the residential development. How you, how we choose to do that is something we wanna do before the fiscal years end, and then think about that number, while we're doing the percentage for the twenty twenty-five, what we put into the rainy day, so. Baker Tilly can do an analysis on where to pick the part, the money apart to do the six hundred twenty-five thousand. I didn't wanna do it just yet, because you're getting money that you spend from rainy, if the invoices go through, you get part of that back, right, so balancing that that line has worked so far, but right now, we're getting ready to hit full, if you've seen Bowen, they're moving. Front street, front street is, is, is uh, getting ready to start moving pretty quick, so the, the balance of, of our community development, or our residence development line is gonna be it's been nice sitting up there, but it's not gonna be, now we're gonna start rocking and rolling, right, construction season's here. Um, so two things, I guess, we'll need to figure out how we get that six twenty-five this year into the residential development, and what percentage would you guys wanna put into the capital outlays for? Rainy day, for sheet that you're, yeah, are you in the same fuse? So what's the consensus on that? And the tricky part is, we don't have our overall number from the state yet, of what you know, that master, what you're gonna get and all that, and I don't, do you, do we know what date we're gonna get that? It'd be so nice if we had a number in front of us that we could say.
I think every year we've always done the max that we put in. Just so that way.
No, I'm, I'm talking about if the state would tell us what are. What are. Lev or.
Because.
All our assessment taxes, everything that we're gonna get. So we could start knowing what we're gonna get to expend. You gotta know what you, your half coming in. To spend it.
Yeah.
Doesn't work that way at the state. You don't get that magical number until you do all this work and you're hoping that's not against that, that levy. So.
So just so you know, last, last year. It was the additional appropriation of fifteen percent was a hundred and seventy three thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars. Well, they perครับ five seven. But. That ended up getting taken away. And we had to. Correct the rainy day budget in Keystone because at the very bottom of the seventeen eighty two notice. It says rainy day transfer in removed due to missing sign transit resolution from the unit. So that what we thought had extra, we actually in fact had a hundred and seventy three dollars, a hundred and seventy three thousand, sixteen hundred and nine. Six hundred and nineteen dollars less than. Because of this appropriate because the.
It didn't actually get appropriated over to it.
Yes, because this resolution.
It was just sent down to the DLGF.
Oh, so, yeah. Says if the resolution submitted during. Notice period transfer can be restored. But it wasn't. So we had, so Amanda had to. Correct the rainy day budget in Keystone because of that. Because the oversight. So that being said, if we're going to, that's why I said, if we're going to do it. We need to move on it and we need to get the resolution and we need to get it sent to the DLGF. So that doesn't happen a second time.
Yes.
But we have, that's.
Well, you mentioned the fifteen percent of that. Standard guesswork there or?
That's, no, it's whatever that approved budget was for twenty twenty four, fifteen percent of that can go into your any day.
Isn't it, isn't it, it, it's fifteen percent for this year. The next year is gonna go back down. How much you?
Next year, I can just back down ten percent. This is last year.
Is it right? So, so it's important we do it this year. That's completely separate than what we're talking about for budget. That fifteen percent is a resolution that we're gonna be. Doing in a council meeting. We need to decide what we're gonna do for.
Yep, that's last year. It was before, we had the four oh one. We did the appropriation for this. This is what we thought was supposed to be in there.
But it didn't get sent to the DLGF.
In time, they knocked that back off. And they had the LGF reappropriate. So we were back down to.
So what's your suggestion initially?
I, I'm saying do the fifteen percent appropriation. Do it, get it done. So we can make sure that this step is taken care of. So when we get ready to do this in Keystone, that our numbers match up and that.
The problem is, is are we gonna hire Baker Tilly to do the fifteen percent assessment on what counts? Cause they're gonna go through all these counts to figure out what, where that fifteen percent comes from.
Right. We absolutely can. That's not a problem. I can get ahold of. Little girl that I met at the ILMCT conference. She gave her card. I would rather talk to her. And ask her if she can.
You're still on a contract with them.
Yeah.
There are, there are.
We've got a contract with them.
Yeah, there are financial consult. They're like a standard. Two fifty or whatever it is. They, they've been very, um, you know, two new elected officials working side by side every day with a lot of things that. Happened the first couple of months. They were very. We. We didn't get invoice for a lot of things that they could have, cause they worked with new officials that were trying to sort those things. So. Yeah. So excuse me. Um, so again, the question's gonna be. That's one thing with the resolution for, that'll be a twenty twenty four dash sixteen, I believe. Do we wanna put any? Funds for the twenty twenty five budget into the. Line items for capital outlays.
Outside of what's already. Well, I guess we had the five seventy five last year is what we're.
So the other capital outlays, last year we went up three percent. The consensus was five hundred seventy five thousand. So.
So what are you seeing?
So I'm trying to figure it. So.
It's really only at three hundred some thousand, not the five seventy five, because we did not have.
I'm trying to think of a year at the beginning of the year. I don't think we had five hundred seventy five. Oh, it was, it was short to whatever amount that she just mentioned. Yeah.
Eighty one was what we started. The one seventy three, six nineteen to it. Put us up to five seventy five and then we had subtracted to bring it back, bring us back down to four oh one. So we were.
Where did that, that you subtracted going to just the general budget somewhere? We don't lose the money. It just don't go into the rainy day.
Go, it just didn't go there. I mean, she had to correct the rainy day budget in Keystone.
Right.
So is it coming to a Sunday then or no?
Is it what?
You don't lose the money. It's just cause it go into that account.
Said it just wasn't put into rainy day where the appropriation.
So it's still, it's still in the.
So the, so the whole time you're thinking you have five seventy five in that rainy day, but you don't actually have it.
It's somewhere.
Yeah, yes.
It's dispersed out in the.
So we, what we need to focus on is the, you know, this is rainy days are capital outlays. You know, we have new capital assets. We have a, a two and a half million dollar street water department. Which that's a, that's a, you know, do we want to? Make extra payments on that to pay down that loan? You know. That's, you know. I, I wanted to pay that voting off in January.
So what would an ideal number be from your perspective in that spot?
For the addition, put additional.
Yes.
Plus the fifty percent.
Right. That's what, yeah, what?
We are currently setting at five.
Fifteen percent is gonna be out of this fiscal budget. So what would you guys think is a good number for the twenty five budget?
You think five seventy five again?
I, I don't know that we could do that because we, we've actually, the good news is that we have a bigger padding now. We have five hundred seventy five thousand in there.
Hey, what do you think? You guys know about that?
I'd say if we do the fifteen percent this year, which is gonna be.
About a one seventy five.
I was gonna say two hundred maybe.
Yeah. You, you, yeah. So I can't remember. I had the math done. It's on that resolution that I done. What was that number Julie? That's when we do that resolution for the fifteen percent of this year's budget. It's three or four hundred thousand.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
So again, you, you want a nice padding for your capital, capital outlays and for your rainy day in case something happens. But we're gonna do it in two, two ways.
It could happen this year, especially in the fall.
So. I think five seventy five is too much for what we're gonna be stretching things out with. The five seventy five was good last year because of everything we had going with the, the projects and the ready and all that, um. We're gonna, I wish I had that exact number for that resolution.
Less.
I'm taking the two hundred, two fifty, somewhere in that area just because. It's rainy day. It's, it's a reserve fund that, that this. Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
So I'd rather have a little extra.
Yeah, it's money that's, that's there for, it's a reserve debt. It's a, it's a reserve fund. You know, it's labeled as city reserves. So it's money that if you had to use it, you use it, but. Two fifty? Two fifty consists.
You're thinking two hundred?
No.
What do you think?
I mean, I'm just.
So that's two.
The whole big scheme of things. I don't think it's a bad idea. For your rainy day to have at least a million sitting there because you never know what's gonna happen.
So if we put an additional, if we put in.
And that doesn't mean that it's gonna stay a million, cause it might have to be.
So what are total be?
Dipped into, right?
Five seventy five plus the fifteen percent plus the two fifty.
I was trying to come up with the total.
Yeah. So one thing that we've discussed is getting some things done quicker out here on the Bowen. Uh, quicker sooner than later. And that's something that.
So if we just do the two fifty, we'd only be at nine eleven, two fifty. That's what the fifteen percent also on the eight, the five seventy five.
He said the fifteen percent's gonna be about three hundred thousand.
Oh.
I can get you the exact number if you want. It's in a reservation I have.
Okay. So yeah, that would put us over for sure. If it's gonna be approximately that, then that puts us.
I, yeah, that, that number's gonna be the fifteen percent that we get from Baker, Baker Tilly for this year's fiscal budget. I, I would, so if you look at twenty twenty two, it was two hundred and eighty one. Twenty twenty three, it went up obviously for capital outlays, which is. Um, Julie and I had some conversations with state board of accounts. The new street and water department building was not in our capital outlays. The seven squad cars was not in our capital outlays. Um, so, some pieces of land that we owned were not in our capital ass or a, assets. So we've now got that caught up completely, right? That was a several conversations through the day of. Wait a minute, you guys have a new street water department? Yeah.
Taking care of with the bank. Yeah, the one that had the.
Yeah, we're using. That's why I'm saying, do you guys agree that it'd be nice to make a double payment on that and pay that down sooner than later? It's again, something you can use your reserve funds for to save a lot of money on interest by taking it, making a double payment. So what is the consensus for the twenty twenty five? Um, percentage for change for the.
Just put it in as two fifty.
Two fifty? Yeah, very good. And we'll, uh, I'll present the resolution to you guys in September for the fifteen percent match. Moving on is gonna be the. Improvements, capital outlays. Yeah. So the trail project, we don't, that was all through a grant for Carrollton. Obviously, no, that's that fifteen thousand was.
That was our engineering fee for the.
Yes, which we, yeah.
Page fourteen. Fourteen or nineteen, it'll say Riverboat. That's the one we took the six twenty five.
Correct, which we did not use. I'm showing ARPA is my next one, but I don't know. Which one do you guys have?
Have Riverboat is next.
We just talked about Riverboat.
Okay.
I just pulled up. So, no change in the Riverboat.
Got it.
Um, ARPA, there's not gonna be a change either because obviously those are funds that were given us by the federal government. One thing Julie and I did have to do was. State how those funds were gonna be, project how those were gonna be used and. They were used all for the broadband. So Julie and I decided to keep it as broadband in case anything with Bowen. We changed that we needed to utilize the, if thirty some thousand dollars that we're gonna have, why not? Sixty four. So again, now that we have a subdivision and all that, you know. That doesn't mean you have to use it for that, but we had to earmark it in the gateway. As you have a plan to use it, right? So.
Had to be allocated.
Yeah.
Or specific that like they had to be.
Yeah. And we've made phase one contract. We've made that payment. So they're currently on phase two.
I did ask for any which is free if it were necessary to use those hard with funds. Or something else like we need them to use them for the law enforcement trial.
Yeah. And again, we don't have to do everything tonight. We're gonna be chugging. Julie and I are gonna be chugging numbers and getting this cleaned up for everybody. Now that we have a consensus for several departments and. We can zero some things out and, um. ARPA is American Rescue Plan, uh, COVID money. Which I have found in some communities, it's still a big, big deal. Of how they're spending it and how they're not spending it and getting. Getting that the federal government to say, look, if you're not gonna spend it on this. Yeah, it's, it's the, we did it right by utilizing it for something that you, the point was to help a community is something you need that costs you. What did you learn during COVID that you could have used? You know, right? So. The world didn't have internet or not the world, but a lot of pieces of Carroll County were short internet. So it was a smart move to.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's something everybody, one way or another, you're gonna use internet. So. Um, any other discussion items for tonight on? Any specific line items? That we have not covered. Julie and I will.
Yeah, there's only a couple left. This is.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I think you're asking about those line item.
No.
We're gonna chug those numbers in once we find those, the CCMG and then the other one. So what's the other two? Cause the sheet that I have is, he has it. Unsafe building. Um, so again, we're going to a full-time code enforcement position that. Um. I'm not saying it's gonna be a little bit more aggressive, but there's gonna be more eyes on pro, on private properties that might need that specific. Uh, it's a process. You have to go by Indiana code. There's a lot of abatement stuff to it. There's a lot. So I don't. I wouldn't necessarily say trim that a whole lot, just because in the event of properties such as. Um. Yes. Yeah, you did, you just never know. And if you take that money away from that line item and then one comes up, we don't have the funds in that line under cover.
So we wanna change it from fifteen.
Our foundation, my foundation, your foundation is different too.
I, I did have that voting looked at again by our, uh, KJG and it's.
Open that door.
Believe it or not, it's actually solid. No, yeah, yeah. Yeah. What's your guys' consensus for the unsafe building?
Well, it shows that it's down thirty three percent. So does money need to go into it?
Uh, I wouldn't say put any into. It, again, we're gonna fill out the co-position, code enforcement and it's a first year for a full-time staff. So I don't. See anything that's gonna be. Big enough to take ten thousand. If, if it does, we can all always shift some money around. But I wouldn't say add anything to it. At this, at this point, that's completely your guys'.
So. Have income coming in from that? If we find somebody in violation.
There's a line item for, um. To code enforcement that we pay to send out the paperwork and. Uh, what line item does the, um, GO Gov come out of? That four thousand that we use, was that under JT's edit? That was under edit. And you guys, so have we looked at the RDC and the?
So we're leaving Lloyd. That's fifteen five, fifteen five eighty before we move on. Shouldn't leave it as such and not change it.
Yes, it's that, but I think we had. It comes out of, um. Yeah, comes out of the.
And we haven't got anything. It says the price is changing and we've already paid it. So that line line item will stay the same. Code, what was your question? Lloyd?
Lloyd, for the use of maintenance products on city building. I thought we, did we skip that one? Something we just wanna, just gonna leave the same.
Julie, do you have, have you gotten anything saying that we need to change Lloyd?
Not.
Yes.
Loit, Lloyd.
I haven't gotten anything. That says anything about changing.
Okay, so and I don't believe we've expended. We haven't expended it at all. So I would say, I leave it. Um, the question is, does that stay there? Does that roll over into the twenty twenty five? Right. So it'll go. So just basically we're gonna replace it.
You still have it at a hundred percent.
Yeah, it's, it hasn't been touched in twenty twenty four. I don't know that it was touched in twenty twenty three. Unsafe building, I would say unless you guys, I, I don't. What is it at fifteen? I, yeah, I would say it doesn't need anymore.
Yeah. And then. Code enforcement, which is at seventy five. Which we just talked about that.
That was covered under Chief Lamar.
That's gonna be zero. This one's gonna, this, this line item's gonna be zero now then. It's everything's going up in the chief, right?
Yes, because now it's a salary because he had that as a line item under his sheet, correct? For violations?
Yeah, I mean, but that just goes.
I don't know that we wanna change any of the code enforcement lines just in case. We change it and then we need it. We change it and then we need it, because first year I have it at full time. Yeah, the seventy-five hundred, seventy-five hundred, I. I think. It's interesting that that's fifteen thousand, and that's what the contract was. But, okay, yeah, I I wouldn't say change anything, again, we'll get a good feel for how things go with the first year having the code enforcement position full time. Uh, Julie and I will do, what do we have, our next meeting is?
Next Tuesday.
Well, it won't have anything to do with this, though, right, is it, is it the same night? Because we have a lot on the, we have a lot to, on our regular stuff, so that's gonna be a very long meeting. So, pretty much then, I'm not gonna be getting Labor Day off, because there's no way I could get all this done before next Tuesday, there's, there's no way. Can't, I have to get everything ready for the, the meeting itself, so. We may or may not get everything finished at the next budget meeting after the next council meeting.
You just tell us what we need to do.
Which, we don't have to do it in two meetings, we can have as many as we need to get it.
Yeah.
Any other items to be discussed on tonight's budget work, work, workshop? Pension and all that's nothing to do with raises, that's all. Oh, yeah, because that's gonna go, that's, yeah, so it's usually a standard five percent, right? Yeah, those will stay the same, those don't usually fluctuate a lot because they. Yeah.
So the next, next good question is, I mean, pretty tired here, but everybody wants to talk about the raises part of it. Since we, I mean, generally, I think everyone's pretty much asking five percent, JT asked for eighty.
I, I got approached today. I, I got approached today about the salary.
There was, there is an order, there's a, there is a, uh, the wage, wage ordinance and salary ordinance from last year that has their salaries.
Right, but I mean, like salary, like there's.
Correct, correct.
That's what.
Yeah, that's why we went to everyone to salary, so that way it eliminated overtime, but it kind of put all the department heads on a equal playing field. Instead of having the, um, gap, because Aaron was able to get more of a, Aaron and Craig and them were able to get more overtime than what. It was, uh, work at the time, so there was like almost a twelve thousand dollar pay gap between the both of them, so we made everybody's salary. I think it's around seventy-two thousand a year, if I remember, number may be wrong, but they were all equal at that time. So superintendents and the chief of base were all the same amount. But they weren't expected to shortchange hours either.
So when do we wanna go through east, are we doing across the board?
Traditionally, the last four years that I've done a budget, we've done it across. The last year, last year, we did not do the superintendents, the mayor, elected officials.
Well, there was a range last year.
Yeah.
Between two and four, everyone got.
No, everybody, well, except for elected officials and department. Employees got four percent.
Apparently got two percent. It was discretion between the department, or it was discretion.
But the budget was set.
The budget was set for four percent, or, or, yeah, so, yeah. That was the.
From the ca- from the council aspect, I got it, it was a possibility.
Yeah.
Okay, but that was up to.
So that was the money that we budgeted for, so whether it was used or not.
Yeah.
What's the consensus for this year?
Are we opposed to doing five percent across the board?
I think five percent's a good number.
But I mean, just, that doesn't mean, right.
Yeah, everybody else.
Yeah, we're, we're, I don't think it's fair that we, um, one department gets any different than anybody. So, if if it's four percent for, for one department, it's four percent for, we don't just have one department that's eight.
Right, I agree.
Yeah.
I say just do five percent across the board.
I'm, I'm, whatever you guys choose, that's something that you.
I feel like that's fair. What are your thoughts, Spencer?
Used to be between two and three percent.
The cost of living goes up so much every year that, yeah.
But we also have a capital to give out. Because we gotta be able to stay with, have stability on being, pay it too.
Right.
Because not only does that five percent increase the salary, but overtime, like, and.
Some just the salaries, you, there's a.
I mean, five percent's a good number, but I'm also. No, I actually don't think it's too high, I think some of the department heads should be up higher, because we didn't.
Yeah.
I think some of the department, think the department head should have a higher rate this year because they got the lower end last.
The department.
Department heads, but at the same time.
Well, what are you thinking, because you're kind of shaking your head a little bit? Just curious what's in your brain, so.
There was, in the past year, there was a great big jump all at once to catch things up, it's good, that's what you have to do. So. I don't know who's gotten, you know, like I recommend you guys to counsel, you haven't got anything for several years, you gotta look into. Is it, well, do people do it for the money? No, you shouldn't, and I don't know anybody that does.
Right, but.
The next four years, as people are gonna go, I don't wanna do all that for, you know, so. My salary is, I I put that on you guys, you, you see what the work, what you see. Just a little bit, I think a thousand or two thousand more than superintendents. So I think it's seventy-eight. Yeah, it's twenty-six, twenty-six.
No, absolutely.
Twenty-six. Twenty-six, two fifty, between three, it's between three departments. Right, Julie? That's how we're paid is. So.
You're at seventy-eight, seven fifty, right? I think you should be making over eighty, definitely, by far.
I think so too, because I don't think we should pay a guy off the street.
No, and seeing how much, seeing how much that, he's up here and seeing how much he has to do, I think. I think they're thirsty, yeah, because they're here. Oh, absolutely, no, 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 then, I wanna. Yeah, I think you.
Yeah, but I don't want, I don't wanna go up any higher than anybody else, so, man, just.
So what's, yours, I think yours needs to be higher.
You guys, that's your guys' decision, but I'm not asking for anything different, I love what I do. I love what I do, and if it was twenty thousand, I'd still do it, so. I'm out of this, and I'm not saying a peep to any of. So, JT, if we do.
Yeah, that's not. I mean, there should be, be made at least that, if you don't pay a. Help the police teams.
If you give me five dollars, I'll be happy with it. I should have made some nice pizza.
Yeah, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying. Take him out. Mayor. And she has, shit goes wrong, she can go to jail. I'm sorry, because that's the way it is, I mean, that's.
So there's probably somebody trying to, you know, start a one eighty hours, you couldn't get it.
I've slept here a few times. That chair's not very comfortable, if you mind paying a little money for a diner, that'd be all right.
Like, people ask me, how's the job feeling? Spencer, in the past, you've just done a, a blanket, is that what you kind of just said, like you?
Generally for the employees and then the superintendents, where we put everyone to salary, that kind of, that brought everyone up.
Right.
For base, and then last year, we did not give the superintendents.
A raise.
Or the elected officials, a bigger raise, we gave them a raise, but I think it was only fifty percent, so. If we give. We give JT the five percent, that brings him to seventy-nine, nine ninety.
Okay.
If we give him a seven point six percent, just basically the tax on six thousand dollars.
Okay.
That was eighty-four, seven fifty.
Okay.
That's a seven.
What about Julie?
And then Julie, what was your base, Julie?
Sixty-nine something.
And that comes out of three departments.
Yeah. So not pervading.
Yeah, you really went in on that second round.
Yeah, we give Julie a five thousand raise, that's seven percent, that brings her up to seventy-four or six.
I think that sounds fair on all of those levels.
Yep, and then all the other superintendents, JT, you get a five percent, which is equivalent about four thousand bucks.
Right, beautiful.
And so the one of the employees.
The employees are five, five percent as well.
Yeah, I think that's great. What do you think?
Put a little bit of a gap between. Overall administration, compared to line.
Yeah, yeah.
If you give me five dollars, I.
You just sit there and be quiet for a hot second.
Seven point six for him, that gives him an extra six thousand dollars. Julie's at seven percent, that gives her an extra five thousand dollars, everyone else gets five percent, which is around four-ish. For the superintendent part of it, I'm sorry, and then five percent still for the employees as well.
It's like seventy-nine or something, I think.
Seventy-two. About seventy-six, seventy-seven.
Oh, yeah, like seventy-seven.
Yeah, well, and the, and the thing is, I have an issue, is like, last year, yeah, we, we really wanted to make sure we take care of our employees, but we did not give. The superintendents for elected officials, and I'm still gonna say zero, because I don't. I don't do it for them, so.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
This job is, uh.
Things getting more complicated.
This job is the. The job itself is the toughest job that, that the world don't see, but it's the most rewarding job, and part of the. Best part of it is working with Julie, because she's, if you don't have a good relationship between your clerk treasurer. You guys learned this at the school I went to. And she and her, her office themselves. The stuff that happens behind the scenes with her office, while all they do is incredible. I I didn't know, I mean, I knew there was a lot to it, but in city government, there's a lot more. And they, I bug them every day with things, because I have to have certain answers to certain things, the things that I'm working on, and they're, boom. So they are a huge asset to the city of Delmar, I, I, every department we have is, our street, our street department guys. They're getting called in for anything and everything, and they're, they're there for. I mean, literally, Aaron was called three times this weekend to our bank at best, and his guys are, yeah, you know, so, we have an awesome. Department head, awesome workers, and it's important that, to me, that we keep them, because. Let them know that we appreciate them and have pride in your job, because we do have a great crew, so. And then, there's two spots that we can't get filled, and that's the world we live in, right, but we want our people to know that we appreciate you, and cost of living is always. Minimum thirty percent, can governments pay that? You can't. So, I, I'm glad that we are, are looking at taking care of our employees, because that's more important than anything I do. And you guys, I, I think you guys need a raise. I know you don't do it for the money, and I don't either, but at the end of the day, you guys are, uh, it's not an easy job, as we've all learned.
I'm still gonna say no for the rest of this year, yeah, that's my, that's my official stance on that, so.
Any further discussion for tonight's budget workshop session?
No, just need to know if you need those numbers for when you go into, or if we don't need to worry about. In putting what we just discussed as far as the raises.
Yes, so if you'll get those to Julie and I, because we're gonna start chugging all this into us. Uh, after the council meeting Tuesday, to, we'll go, or during, we'll go into our next workshop. We'll have a much cleaner, you won't have all this stuff, unless there's something we missed, um, it'll be a much cleaner. It'll show the years, it'll show all that stuff, and it'll be a much, tonight's a workshop discussion, and. Uh, now we can put it into the, the paper, so.
Consensus, just for clarification, before we send this off to Cameron and Julie. Cameron, six thousand dollars, which represents about seven point six percent, Julie, five thousand, which is seven percent, all department heads, and, um. Employees, five percent.
Across the board, including JT.
Yes, that, part of that, and then council still at zero percent.
Yeah.
And I'll send that to you guys, so you have it.
And for the record, I'm not asking for a raise.
We know. Are we finished, because I think Mason's done doing his sit-ups and he's ready to be picked up.
I would try to do a sit-up right now, but I have so much to speak.
Texas, I was like, hey, are you guys gonna, what I say, I said.